Okay. Good morning councillors, officers and members of the public. Welcome to this virtual meeting of the Strategic Planning Board of Cheshire East Council. I am councillor Stuart Gardner, your chairman for today's meeting. I will begin by explaining some ground rules for those taking part in the meeting to follow. Please can you keep your camera and microphone switched off unless I invite you to speak? This is to ensure that only one person can be heard at any time, taking without interruption. This also helps to avoid feedback and break background noise and will save bandwidth. For members of the board wishing to speak during a debate or raise a procedural point, please indicate your desire to do so by using the chat facility. If any of you have a problem with the chat facility, can you let Sarah know please? So I know that I'm looking for hands as well. Which can be accessed via the information bar near the centre of your display. Present today at today's meeting are members of the Strategic Planning Board. I intend to call their name one by one and ask them to switch on their camera and microphone to introduce themselves and confirm they can hear and see proceedings. And I will begin that now by calling councillor Anthony Critchley.
I am here and I can see you Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Critchley. Councillor Steve Edgar.
Yes Chair, I can see and hear, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Ashley Farrell.
Yes Chair, I can see and hear.
Thank you very much. Councillor Paul Finlow.
Yes, I'm present but my camera's not working but I can see you.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Finlow. Councillor David Jeffery.
Yes Chair, I can see and hear.
Thank you very much. Councillor Steve Hogburn.
Yes, I can see and hear you, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Hogburn. Councillor James Nicholas.
Good morning, yep, I can see and hear.
Thank you very much councillor Nicholas. Councillor Patrick Redstone.
Yes, I can see and hear you Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Redstone. Councillor Jackie Weatherall.
Morning Mr Chairman, I can see and hear you.
Thank you very much. And councillor Phil Williams.
Thank you Chair, yes I can both see and hear.
Thank you very much. Also present are the following officers who are here to advise the board regarding the items on the agenda. They are Sarah Baxter from Democratic Services, Sheila Dillon, the planning lawyer, Paul Herdes, our highways officer, and David Malcolm, the head of planning. I will now explain how the board will operate. The planning officer will introduce the item, show slides, photos and plans regarding the item to be discussed. I will then invite any registered speakers to address the committee and ask them to switch on their camera and microphone and to state their name and the name of the group they are representing. I will inform them how much time they have to speak and that they will finish within this time or their microphones may be muted to enable the meeting to move forward. I would note that there is a differentiation between visiting councillors at the time period and those for the general members of the public. If anything the public speaker said was unclear, I will allow members to ask for questions of clarification. Once they have spoken, the public speaker will turn off their camera and microphone and listen to the rest of the debate and decision. The planning officer will respond to any issues raised by the public speaker and then members will be able to ask the planning officer questions before moving to the debate of the item. I remind members to indicate in the chat function if they wish to take speak during the debate. When the debate moves to a close, I will check whether the officers have any final advice to give and the items of resolution which will then be moved and seconded are all clear to all. I will then invite each member of the board in alphabetical order in turn to switch on their camera and microphone and to confirm their support for the resolution or otherwise by stating for, against or not voting. The result of the vote will be reported to the meeting. Members of the board can only participate in and vote on the item if they can hear and be heard throughout. If a member loses their connection and is able to alert this fact, the meeting may be able to adjourn for a short period to allow them to reconnect. If they are unable to reconnect within a short time, the meeting will continue without them and they will be unable to participate or vote in the item. If the live stream of the meeting fails, the meeting will be adjourned for a reasonable length of time to try and restore the connection. If it is not possible to do so, the meeting will be postponed to a new date. Fingers crossed that doesn't happen. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and streamed live to the public. Can I also remind any members who are not members of the board to desist from using the chat facility? You shouldn't be able to use that, thank you very much. I will now move to item one on the agenda, which is to receive apologies for absent. Ms Baxter.
Yes Chairman, apologies from councillor Hunter, councillor Groves and councillor Groves' substitute is councillor Finlow and councillor Morton, his substitute is councillor Nicholas.
Thank you very much. Can I now ask, are there any declarations of interest of board members please? Councillor Jeffrey.
Yeah, just for openness, I've received correspondence from one of the speakers today, PT Yates. I've not replied other than to acknowledge receipt, so I'm not predetermined.
Thank you very much. Can I ask, Mr Yates contacted other members of the board. Councillor Nick.
And in that case also, in the interest of openness and transparency, I have also received communications but I equally have not responded either.
Thank you very much. I anticipate that might be the views of everybody. Are there any other declarations of interest before I indicate mine? In the interest of openness, in addition to the three members of this council speaking, I think it's appropriate to say that I am known to town councillor Sue Hellywell. We have regular contact outside of the council. I also know Mr Peter Yates through my previous business work and I am also known to town councillor Derek Huff as he was a former colleague of mine on this council. Councillor Williams.
Yes, sorry, in the interest of openness, yes, I'm also a town councillor, so obviously I'm well known to both councillors Hellywell and Huff, but I have not any predetermination on the matter.
Thank you very much. Councillor, sorry councillor Redstone.
I also know councillor Hellywell, she is on the same Conservative Committee as I am.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other declarations of interest before we move to the next item of the agenda?
Yeah, Chairman, we all know present and past members and other listed here. I mean, no PT Yates, I know Michael Burdakin, I know Sue Hellywell. I mean, we could spend half an hour going through it one by one.
Councillor Finlow, it is for each councillor to determine whether or not they feel it's appropriate to declare their interests if you don't believe it's necessary in your interest. I accept that we all know the members of this council, but some of us may know them in a different capacity and that's the reason why some people choose to make a different representation, as we have heard from previous speakers. So thank you for pointing that out to me. Right, we'll now move to, if there are no further declarations of interest and I'm not seeing any indications from either of the tools employed, I intend to move to public speaking. No, public speaking, sorry, I won't move to public speaking, I'm sure, jump to line in the agenda. I will now move to item four, which is site allocations and development policies document, revised publication draft, and I'm going to ask David Malcolm to address the committee on this matter and obviously we will then refer to go to public speaking. Thank you very much. Mr Malcolm, the floor is yours.
Thank you Chair, I'll just share my screen and bring up just a few slides just to introduce this item. Can I confirm for you Chair that you can see that presentation?
I can, Mr Malcolm.
And you can hear me loud and clear hopefully.
I can hear you loud and clear, I've just adjusted the speaker on my computer because I couldn't at first.
Let me just, hopefully you should be able to hear me anyway, so any problems with that then, please put it on the chat and I'm sure Sarah can monitor that. So, good morning members. So this is obviously an extensive item for members to deal with, long history behind the proposal. I've just got a few slides just as introduction, we know we've got a number of speakers today as well and I'm sure there'll be some points to come back to after those speakers. I think just to set the scene, members will be aware that the local plan strategy was adopted in July 2017 and that is what's considered to be part one of the plan. The site allocations and development policies document, SADPD, is effectively the part two of the plan. And it sets out more detailed non-strategic policies to guide planning application decisions and it also allocates a limited number of additional non-strategic sites. And when we say non-strategic, those are generally less than 150 houses or five hectares in land. Just in terms of background and these further details are obviously within your report, where basically it looks at the background of the plan and there's a table on your agendas, which is I think was originally page 147. Effectively this process began in February 2017 and effectively went through the issues paper and then we've been through periods of consultation, firstly through what's called Regulation 18, when we had the first draft of the SADPD in September 2018. And some members may recall the publication draft of August 2019, which is the Regulation 19 staged, the technical jargon. And that was basically, was subject to a six week period for representations from 19th of August to 30th of September. And a report consultation was made, so the initial publication draft was published in May of this year. And that's effectively kind of where we've got to prior to today. Just as a sort of looking forward, so the proposal, as you'll see from recommendation, is to go out to consultation, recommend Cabinet to go out to consultation. So moving forward, the proposed next steps after Cabinet approval would be to go out to a further period of six weeks, six week period through probably October, November for representations. And those representations would go forward effectively to the examination, which we would summarise the comments. So effectively, we've established through the changes that we've made since last August, that the proposed changes are significant and therefore if it is agreed by Cabinet, a further period of representations will come forward and that's that period in October, November. Just to note, representations to the initial publication draft would, unless withdrawn or superseded, will also remain live and be submitted for consideration by the inspectors' examination stage as well. So effectively, that will go forward, full council decision to go forward to the examination. And the expectation potentially is to look to a period of adoption towards the end of 2021 into early 2022. That will depend potentially on the actual examination and period of time associated with that. So just to go through and these are obviously, there's much more detail than I'm going to talk about in presentation and to be honest also in terms of answering any particular issues, you'll see from the agenda that you submitted, there's extensive material submitted. The majority of the material that you've seen is the sustainability appraisal, but there's also appendices that indicate the actual policies, the list of allocated sites and also the track changes version of the SADPD, which basically highlight these changes that are just summarised on this slide before you. And again, those are effectively summarised in the report on page 150. So just turning to sort of a little bit more on those. So effectively the removal of the housing allocations at LSC, local service centres, that is a change that's come in since August. Basically the results of the housing monitoring has shown that basically we've got a good supply of new homes. And as you'll see within the report, for the service centres, it now stands at about 3,210 homes against an indicative figure of 3,500. And effectively, after consideration of the housing supply, the way houses have been coming forward over the previous years, we have decided to take out those allocations, particularly within the green belt sites. And the reason for that, I mean, there's an element of a non-balanced decision on it, but we do believe that more houses will come through, through a windfall approach to housing allocations. And those small windfall developments which will take place would add further to the housing supply within the planned period. It's also important to note that because we're looking at removing those sites from the green belt plus the additional site in Audlam, but in terms of green belt, we do have to pass an exceptional circumstance test. And that, we don't believe necessarily exists anymore, given the progression of the plan. So effectively, we don't believe the exceptional circumstances exist to make further changes to the green belt boundary, which is why those allocations have been removed. I think the other part of that potentially is to acknowledge that safeguarded land, excuse me, has been reviewed and effectively has also been amended to take account of the new approach. So they're removing those housing allocations from the green belt, it does have effectively a knock-on effect. And we have to continue where we left off if you like from the local plan strategy. And part two of the plan, the SADPD is effectively what's referred to as a daughter document, so it has to tie in with the principles of the local plan strategy. And it was evidenced that local plan strategy of something like 200 hectares of safeguarded land would need to be provided, which leaves 13.6 approximately to be safeguarded within the local service centres. That land specifically removed from the green belt and it's also there to basically to provide a longer term need beyond the current planned period. And that's a requirement that we have to have in place. And in terms of the, you'll see reference to apportionment where effectively we've had to review that and take into account of the number of factors in those assessments. So we've looked at the level of services and facilities in local service centres, the constraints such as landscape quality, heritage assets. We need to minimise the impact on the green belt overall and also just setting up general site opportunities. And when we've done that, there are some changes to the safeguarded land and you'll notice that within your report, it notes that in the absence of there being any suitable available sites in Mobley, there is some safeguarded land which is directed to Chelford, following the considerations that I've just referred to. So that's, there is a change to some of the safeguarded land, but that reflects the fact that we have actually removed the specific allocations. You'll see there, there's also reference to settlement boundaries have been updated to reflect that same monitoring information. I think of a significant change that we would like to identify is in respect of climate change. We've basically updated a couple of the policies to enable us to look at higher efficiencies on homes. So again, as you see within the report, one of the first changes would introduce a requirement which is permissible on the Planning and Energy Act of 2008. And we're proposing that new build residential development should achieve a reduction in CO2 emissions of 19% below what is currently required under building regulations. Now that's something that we're taking a, you know, a realistic approach to that. There may be times when that could be problematic in terms of viability, but given the council's environmental strategy and climate change credentials, we think it's an important element to pursue. It may be superseded in years to come by the future home standard, which has been talked about as well. Schedules come through 2025, but there's obviously a lot of changes within central government policies at present. And a second is also to introduce a requirement for all new to major residential development to provide for at least 10% of energy needs onsite from renewal or low carbon sources. And that's what's referred to as the Merton Rule that you see on your presentation. We've also updated aircraft noise to reflect advice from consultants and response to representations, so the policies have been updated there. Members will be aware of the work that we've been doing on the houses in multiple occupation and the policies have changed and amended to reflect the emerging houses of multiple occupation SPD. And as I say, we're fairly familiar to members, which has recently been to this board. I think in terms of other elements, just to note, the Gippon traveller policies and allocations have been revised to meet the assessed accommodation needs. And there's two additional sites that have been identified, one of which is Mill Lane Smallwood. And those are basically do, to basically deal with our acknowledged need, both for identified need but also this category of unknown need as well. I think finally, retail and town centres, this is to an extent, it's a constant moving feat particularly at the moment. But the retail policies have been updated to reflect the findings of an update to the retail study from 2020. And as you'll be aware, there's been a lot of changes recently in respect of permitted development changes and changes to the planning use classes. So the plan has been updated to reflect those. So those are the main changes, there are also other details referred to in your reports Just to highlight effectively what the recommendation for today is, effectively, board are asked to consider the revised publication draft of the SADPD and its associated documents and recommend to Cabinet that documents are approved for publication so that representations can be made over them over a period of six weeks. So effectively this is to recommend to Cabinet that we go out to a further period of representation for six weeks. And then obviously alongside that are the other documents listed in 2.11, we recommend that Cabinet approves and publishes the draft plan supporting evidence base. And you'll note that that evidence base is substantial. And I think this is where a lot of the comments and queries that might come out today, I think there's over 60 documents that support the evidence base for the formulation of the document that you see today. So Chair, that's all I have for the time being. So I think I'll pass back to yourself Chair and then obviously invite speakers to come forward.
I'm muted. Sorry Chair, I think you're muted.
Sorry, I was trying to save bandwidth. So I, thank you very much Mr Malcolm. We will obviously, board members have the opportunity to ask Mr Malcolm questions later on in the proceedings, but I'm now going to go to public speakers and I first will call councillor Rachel Bailey. If I can ask councillor Bailey to turn on her camera and her microphone and advise her that she has five minutes to speak. When she's finished, if she can wait a while and see if there are any questions from board members and once any questions have been asked and answered, if she can then turn off her camera and microphone. So councillor Bailey please.
Is that Chair on the list, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's why I'm just wondering.
Do you want to go to the next speaker Chair?
I will, I will do that. So if I can ask, we'll come back to councillor Bailey, I'm now going to ask councillor Brendan Murphy if he can perhaps join the meet, turn his camera and his microphone on so he can speak to the meeting please and then you also have five minutes councillor Murphy.
Thank you Mr Chairman and Mayor, thank you very much from your last meeting to have deferred this item so that we would have an opportunity to make a comment on it. With regard to the Disley issue, it is beyond my understanding how the planning officers can think that it's just a little thing is of cutting out part of the green belt. The green belt in the north side of Disley is absolutely vital because otherwise we're going to become, if we take a bit out each year, each decade, sooner or later, we become part of Greater Manchester. And I think therefore there's numerous reasons, but that is a particular reason why we must protect the green belt on the north side of Disley. There are many other considerations that don't seem to have been taken into account and the prime reason, one of the prime reasons is the A555. That's a bypass that's facilitated, helped many of the other districts in Cheshire and indeed Greater Manchester. But what it has meant is that a lot more traffic has been poured into Disley, into the A6 through Disley. At the moment, of course, we have a little bit of the relaxation of it because of COVID-19, but once we get back to normal economy, then it's going to be an absolute nightmare. Do we talk about the need for housing? Well, I don't ever know quite what that means, that there is a need for housing in say, Disley. It's whether you need small houses or big houses or whatever, but nevertheless, we put that to one side. The need for housing in Disley is confounded by the fact that the school is overcrowded, the health facilities are poorly stretched, but more important than that is this question of the A6. Children have to cross that road to get to the school and the school itself is within, what, 20 yards of the A6. Now you've got this road problem, the traffic coming through the village, HGV vehicles. We've already had, in the last week, for two weeks, have been three serious accidents, not major accidents but serious accidents caused by HGV scraping cars along the side of the roadway. Mr Chairman, I don't think that sufficient consideration has been given to the impact the A555 is going to have on Disley. And every single house that is built these days probably means at least two cars, in some cases larger houses, you're talking about four cars. To pour more cars onto the road through the Disley, more cars than is at the moment, is bad planning. The other last thing, I should point, there are many other points, but I think a lot of people that have made them. The other issue is the, sorry. Oh yeah, so it's just an issue on the Jackson's Edge Road, which the Lime Wood Road, the bit that we're talking about, has become a rat run because of the A6. We've already had accidents on that road and there'll be even more if we're not careful. And I think Mr Chairman, I shall leave it at that stage, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the board have any questions for councillor Murphy? I'm not seeing any indication, so I will now, I can report that councillor Bailey has restored connectivity. So thank you very much councillor Murphy, can you please turn off your camera and your microphone? And councillor Rachel Bailey, can you please now turn on your camera and your microphone and please address the board?
Thank you Mr Chairman, would you mind if I close my camera because of connectivity issues now that I've shown my face?
No, that's perfectly okay councillor Bailey.
Thank you. Mr Chairman, members of the Strategic Planning Board, thank you for allowing me to speak today. In relation to Local Plan Two, I am pleased to see that this matter is finally moving forward after much delay. I have to say however, this consultation in view of the review and changed makeup of the Local Plan Two or the SADPD is causing grave concern in the village of Audlam and confusion. If I look to the report accompanying the appendices and go to page 17, it clearly references the removal of local service centres sites and suggests that the site in Audlam is an important piece of green belt, of green, green open countryside. Yes, of course it is, but it is. Yes, of course it is, but it is very much part of the village envelope. Equally, in an earlier consultation, an adjacent piece of land was removed from the Audlam LSE on the basis that windfall sites would bring the housing number forward to sustain the village of Audlam. The topography of Audlam means that windfall sites are few and far between. Over the years of my time as councillor, I have seen three or four employment sites built on and certainly I've seen large gardens built on. And whilst in Audlam, we treasure our village and would want to protect it and ensure that it is safe, its green fields are preserved. We do need assurances that in removing, the proposal to remove this site, that actually we won't result in an unplanned position. That would be the worst of all scenarios. So my first question to the board is, please may I ask that you assure yourselves in advance of making the decision asked of you today, that the housing land supply will not be impacted by the proposal before you? Will you also assure yourself that villages such as Audlam can be sustained? For example, Audlam has a primary school. It is a good primary school, but nevertheless, its geographical location at the borders of Staffordshire and Shropshire and the very edge of Cheshire means that it isn't always easily accessible to attract pupils from elsewhere. And there are times when the local community perhaps doesn't have as many children as perhaps the school would want it to. I'm guilty of that now being of an elderly age, if you like. In addition, we have retained our on-call fire station. That fire station is retained because of the volunteers that come forward. And it requires people in the village and young people to continue to be able to move to our village for that to continue. We have a vibrant village with shops, post office, but they all need support. In considering the headline of, in removing this site, we are protecting green fields, I need two assurances. One is sustainability of communities, most of all Audlam. And two is that we can be assured that our housing land supply will not be impacted by this. There is another point. Audlam, like many others, has worked hard to produce a neighbourhood plan. That neighbourhood plan is guarded jealously and any applications that come forward are tested by the local parish council and community as to the detail in the neighbourhood plan alongside Cheshire East's policies. That neighbourhood plan could, if this consultation document is ultimately adopted, be out of kilter and have an allocated site that was allocated in tune with the local planning authority within its neighbourhood plan. And I question whether that will still mean that this site at Bird's Nest will be vulnerable to challenge by developers. There is one final question I must ask. You will, many of you, some of you, I have done on the local plan during my time at Cheshire East. The first port of call was to call for sites. And then it was to measure those sites. And I'm aware of the work done by our professionals that ultimately resulted in sites classed as deliverable coming forward. And thank you, may I finish?
Yes, finish your sentence, please.
In terms of deliverability, can we be assured that whilst we may have the housing numbers at present, that the sites that will be retained or the windfall sites will actually be deliverable and therefore protect our vital housing land supply? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to councillor Bailey, please? Can you please indicate in the box or? I'm not seeing anything in the. Councillor Redstone.
Good morning, councillor Bailey. I've got a few questions to ask you. The first thing is, why do you think the original local plan was rejected?
Gosh, right. I became chairman of the Local Plan Task Force that was set up. I became chairman probably nine months later, after the 2015 elections. That Local Plan Task Force worked very closely with the inspector and every step of the way had to be agreed. There was a long list of reasons why the inspector paused it. One in particular was that there wasn't a balance of development allocated across Cheshire East to sustain its communities and bring forward not only residential properties, but affordable properties and in balance with that employment sites. Another concern was that in protecting Green Belt by not allocating sites in Green Belt areas or limited numbers in Green Belt areas, that those communities couldn't be sustained. But moreover, that the council hadn't conducted a Green Belt assessment to ensure where Green Belt should absolutely, or assess where Green Belt should be retained at all costs. And where Green Belt, bearing in mind the huge ways of Green Belt, where his words, where Green Belt could be afforded to ensure planned development. And of course, that included safeguarded land. And we all know that safeguarded land is where Green Belt is allocated to ensure that any development in the Green Belt is always planned. And it was a huge, it was a big criticism of the then inspector, if I recall correctly, that the amount of land that was safeguarded in that original plan was not commensurate with the potential need of Cheshire East. Not only to ensure safeguarding Green Belt, but to ensure that the plan fitted with the economy, jobs and growth that were also evidenced and then renewed during my time as chair of the task force. I mean, there is so much more detail and I am answering on the hoof and going from memory, you can tell.
Okay, councillor Redstone, do you have another question?
Yes, Chair, if I may.
May I come back, actually?
Councillor Bailey?
In considering, if that's a question, rather than my memory, is it not possible for officers to provide the reasons why the plan was paused and the reasons from the inspector? Because I genuinely.
I think councillor Bailey, that will be a very good idea. So if I can ask Mr. Malcolm to give a resume of that when he comes back to the board later when the speakers have finished it. Mr. Malcolm, if you can make a note that we'd like an answer to that question, please. Councillor Redstone?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Can you also tell me why have not enough houses been built over the last 10 years, especially in the north of the borough?
Gosh, right. So.
Councillor Bailey, would you prefer that this matter is referred to back to the members or are you happy to answer it?
No, I will. I will try and answer it. Well, Green Belt is rightly in place to protect conurbations from merging together. Green Belt at that point was sacrosanct, that was pre the Green Belt assessment and pre any allocations. There is, if you read the Sunday Press when it comes to planning, or indeed it is said that on occasions, sites can be allocated and the delay in development of housing is sometimes because developers build to order, if you like, or, you know, and there has to be the economies of scale. I am clear that to rectify this, Cheshire East Council looked to its own landholding. Particularly if we look at, there is an allocated site in the local plan known as the SMDA, South Mat Development Area, that has come forward, had come forward under Matt Burra and was re-adopted by Cheshire East Council. It's not an easy site to develop, but hence Cheshire East Council looked to adopt that. And that work was originally dealt with by Engine of the North, which of course has now come in-house. Within the local plan, we have another of our sites, which is the Handforth Garden Village, which that village, garden village status is key in in the council being able to develop a bespoke village that meets health needs and not just simply return. I would be interested to know of the progress of that because that is key in underpinning our housing land supply. You would envisage that a council would bring its own sites forward in a way that the private market perhaps wouldn't. Beyond that, again, I would like to defer to officers.
That's fine. I have councillor Nicholas asking a point of order. Councillor Nicholas, what is your point of order?
Sorry, it's just to clarify, we seem to be going over old ground here, which is all very interesting. But shouldn't we be concentrating on the SADPD that's in front of us?
I do concur with you, councillor Nicholas, but we have to be aware that there are members of the council who perhaps weren't privy to the earlier discussions. And so therefore, if they wish to ask questions that might be relevant. But if I can ask councillor Redstone to think of that point when he's, if he has any more questions to councillor Bailey, or he might want to ask them later on.
Thank you, Chair. The only other question I wanted to ask councillor Bailey was, how do these changes relate to the neighbourhood plans that are already in place? Do they support them or do they undermine them, in her opinion?
I think if councillor Bailey wants to address that to things within her own area, that might be a reasonable question. Otherwise, I will ask Mr. Malcolm to address that at a later stage. So councillor Bailey, your own experience in Audlam, if you can address that, please.
Absolutely. The point I hope to make, to be honest, my concern in the change after, you know, this council is known for the support of neighbourhood plans, has been and continues to be. And those neighbourhood plans have been drawn up alongside details available from the local planning authority at that time. And I am concerned that sites could end up allocated in a neighbourhood plan, but not in the local, in the SADPD or in the local plan. And that's my focus on the housing land supply because that is when those allocations would be particularly vulnerable. Equally, those sites, as far as I'm aware, have gone through the process of the assessment of whether or not they are deliverable. And we have seen the Stapley Site decision recently where that was viewed as deliverable. So I would want assurances, and I know it's very early and it's the first step of consultation, and I welcome the process, progress, but in going out to consultation, we need to have assurances that we are, that our communities are protected with planned development and there isn't a discourse.
Thank you very much, councillor Bailey. Sarah wants to come in. I'm expecting her to tell me off for allowing councillor Bailey to go on a little bit.
Well, if you mean, Mr. Chairman, please come in, Sarah. I feel like I'm in the mastermind chair.
No, Chairman, just remind members that any questions asked of speakers should be on what the speaker said. So I think maybe the first question that was asked of councillor Bailey was perhaps not entirely fair. It really should be on what they have said in their statement. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, which is why we've referred that matter back to Mr. Malcolm to address it at a later stage. Councillor Redstone, have you got any more specific questions relating to?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. If you can turn your microphone and camera off so we've got an appropriate broad win. I now want, are there any more questions to councillor Bailey? In that case, thank you very much, councillor Bailey. If you can turn your microphone off, please. Thank you. And I'm now going to, if I can move my script, I'm now going to call councillor David Brown to address the board. And councillor Brown, can you turn your microphone and camera on? You also have five minutes to speak and you may be asked questions. I will try to ensure that the questions you are asked relate to what you say. So councillor Brown?
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My involvement in the local plan, I think for the elderly, elderly members of the council will remember, I was in charge of the local plan first draft that was put on pause. And I just want to check on some of the principles that have been adopted, both in the local plan when it was there and the changes that have now been made in the current document we're discussing. Back in the day when we started off, it's obviously very difficult for a new authority to put together a new local plan, bearing in mind the circumstances of Cheshire East with a lot of Green Belt in the north, very little Green Belt in the south. And we've all experienced some problems in planning applications and appeals that have gone on when we hadn't got a housing land supply in previous years. My concern about this document is because the original plan was put on pause to ensure that development was sustainable and across the whole of Cheshire East, that when one looks at the amendments that have been made, removing the sites in basically in Alderley Edge, removing sites in Mobley, removing sites in Presbury, removing sites in Bollington, that we're in danger of having a plan where development will be all be in the south of the borough and therefore subjecting some of the southern towns, particularly who were worst hit during that period, being Allsager and Sandbatch in terms of housing development that was unplanned and was driven by developers during that time. And then Mr. Malcolm went through the housing land supply and saying, we were up to date. From my point of view, I think we're a few thousand houses short in housing land supply. So one of my questions would be, what steps are being taken to ensure that we're going to maintain housing land supply? Because the imbalance in this plan, those sites that have been removed in the north of the borough, if they're removed in the north, they've got to go somewhere else and that fundamentally will be down in the south. And if we haven't got housing land supply numbers in place, will mean we'll go through the torrid time that we went through back in 2017, 18, where there was a lot of unplanned development driven by developers. Now, originally, when the plan was put together, great emphasis was given on sustainability, sustainability of the local service centres and the service centres, based around the hierarchy of MacIswold and Crewe, coming down to service centres and then down to local service centres. My reading, I just like assurance from Mr. Malcolm that the local service centres as a concept will still be maintained. I think councillor Bailey referred to it in terms of Audlam as a local service centre and the sustainability. The way that I read the plan now is, obviously, the impact on Alderley Edge with the houses being removed will have some impact on them as a local service centre and what they've got as supply in terms of facilities to it, surrounding neighbourhoods. And the same goes for all the other sites that have been removed. So I think I'm very concerned that we're going to end up with a document that will go to the inspector that's going to get refused on the basis that we're not going to have dispersed development across the borough, across the borough. So I'd just like to know what's changed in terms of taking these sites away in terms of policy and principle when the plan was originally put together and then amended following the inspector's guidelines. That what confidence have we got that we're still going to satisfy those? Or are we raising what was raised in the original plan that I was involved with? So that specifically is the houses that are coming out of the north, where are we going to put them is a question. And also, what steps are we taking to ensure that we got housing supply numbers? We've seen now, and I'm not as involved as I used to be, but certainly from what I, having listened into some strategic planning on key sites, because they still are of interest to me, we tend to be building less houses than were originally in the local plan. So I'd just like those issues addressed. So what policy changes have we made, if any, to change the structure of the? to change the structure of the LCAS and service centres? What steps are being taken to ensure housing land supply is going to be met? And where are the northern houses going to go? Thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Brown. I see that we have two people wishing to speak. And so I'm going to ask councillor Williams and then councillor Redstone to speak, please. Councillor Williams, can you ask your question first?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm very interested in councillor Brown's question. And I will be asking similar, hopefully debating similar issues when we get to the debate with the officers. But from your experience, and I think you've summarised what my understanding of what's happened very well and very succinctly. But from your experience, if you were involved now, is there anything you feel could be done particularly in relation to the issue of sites being unbalanced towards the south of the borough?
Very good question. Obviously, in terms of where applications can be made, because the north is so protected by the Green Belt, you actually have to drive development there. So in essence, the reason, original reason for putting the hand for the development into that local plan was to ensure that we got some development in the north of the borough. And that was put there to actually reduce the amount of Green Belt that would have to be released. So that and the SMDA site in Macclesfield were the key things to try to balance up when the plan was finally approved, to balance up the inequity between the north and the south. If those sites aren't delivered in part during the life of this plan, and to be fair, not, hopefully progress has been made on those. And perhaps Mr Malcolm could give us an update on that. But if they aren't developed, there will be a total unbalance across the whole of Cheshire East. And the only way we will get anywhere near the housing numbers, and if you remember, one of the key reasons of the plan being paused was because of the numbers. We went through extensive consultation and to put the first phase together, but the inspector felt that the housing numbers were not appropriately applied across, evenly applied across the borough. Does that answer your question?
Okay, I'd be interested to hear the officer's response as well later on.
Thank you very much councillor Williams. Councillor Redstone?
I noticed that you mentioned about the local service centres. And I understand that we're keeping the key service centres, but we're going to get rid of the local service centres in this revised plan. Why were they put in in the first place? Why were the local service centres in the original plan?
Well, it was the principle of putting a plan together to say that, I'll probably take the most contentious one that was in there, and that was Holmes Chapel and Holmes Chapel and the surrounding environment and Goost Street, which led to a lot of debate at the time. And it's who goes from where and where is the service provided? So do Goost Street people go to Holmes Chapel or do they go to Congleton? And probably now, if you looked at that in context of where we are today with the link road being put in Congleton, where do the people go for their service centres and how are you going to make them sustainable? So the extra load on Holmes Chapel and the extra load on Congleton will mean there's got to be some significant infrastructure development within those two towns to cater for the increase in population. So that was why it was taken down to the lower level, to make sure that we got the infrastructure, both in medical terms, in educational terms, and in infrastructure and transport terms, to ensure that we got balanced and sustainable development across the borough. And as I hope I highlighted in my speech, the getting rid of the local service centres, I want to know what action's being taken to make sure that those those centres are actually going to be sustainable in the long term, bearing in mind that the whole theory of putting them there was to ensure that those questions were asked and the right facilities were provided.
Thank you very much. Can I ask, Chair, that that same question is asked to Mr Malcolm when it comes for him to speak?
Okay, Mr Malcolm, if you can please note the question that councillor Redstone asked and perhaps provide us an answer before we go into debate. Thank you very much. Thank you much councillor Redstone. Any other questions to councillor Brown? In that case, thank you very much councillor Brown for joining us this morning.
Thank you very much indeed.
Okay, bye bye. Right. I'm now going to call town councillor Sue Halliwell to address the board. Miss Halliwell, can you please turn on your camera and your microphone? And you have three minutes to speak, after which you may be asked questions by the board. Before I go any further, I've got councillor Edgar's hand up. Councillor Edgar, are you experiencing a problem with the box? The chatroom box?
Sorry, I pressed it in error.
Thank you very much. That's okay. So if councillor, town councillor Halliwell can turn her screen and microphone on, please.
I can't, I can't turn my camera on. I'm really sorry, but I just.
That's okay councillor Halliwell. We can hear you.
Okay.
If you'd like to go ahead.
Before I start, can I just confirm something? And I'm really sorry, I'm speaking as a resident, not as a town councillor, and I registered as a resident.
I apologise. That's my assumption being made, Mrs Halliwell. As a resident, then, please speak.
Is councillor Huff not speaking on behalf of Allsager Town Council?
Councillor Huff has registered to speak. He will be speaking later.
Okay, sorry, I thought you were doing councillors first. I do apologise. Sorry. Dear Chairman and councillors, thank you for allowing me to talk today on the document before you. I am objecting to this document for the following reasons. Cheshire East Council is assuming that future windfall commitments will help to facilitate the overall indicative level of housing development. There is no guarantee that this will happen. You do not know the level of housing numbers due to the uncertainty of COVID-19 and Brexit. Previously, there's been much criticism of the local plan for saying for saying figures are in the region of. Taking land out near the Green Belt is not protecting the Green Belt. It is making easier to build on the Green Belt. Previously, in November 2018, Cheshire East Council could show there was a 7.2 year supply, and that placed the council comfortably above the five-year threshold. Recently, an appeal has just been lost in Landtwich. In the planning inspector's decision, it was stated that Cheshire East Council now have a 6.6 years' housing supply. The inspector deducted 301 dwellings from the supply of housing figures in that appeal as they were not deliverable. This proves that the Green Belt is not safe under these new proposals. There could be real concerns that appeals will be lost and Green Belt land will be built on. Cheshire East Council has a procurement of a housing development framework that went through Cabinet. This document places the Green Belt, council-owned land and small holdings under threat. There is no mention in this document of surplus land. You should not proceed with this document before you today until the wording has been changed in the procurement of a housing development framework. Allsager has just had a 350 outline planning application for White Moss Quarry revoked as there has not been any reserve matter stage coming forward. This site is a strategic site in the local plan. Where is this windfall site in Allsager going to be? I hope it's not going to be Green Belt. Finally, councillors, you will remember the Marina application from last week, where the wording for up to was debated at great length. At the very least, this committee should be getting realistic figures of how many houses Cheshire East Council counts as windfall, and how many will be in each town. One of the few policies I do agree with, which may come as a surprise to some, is ENV15. And I hope Cheshire East Council will adhere to this document before you when it finally gets voted at full council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to Mrs Halliwell? Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. And I'd just like to ask Mrs Halliwell whether she could just remind us of what the policy EN15 actually states. That'd be helpful, because yes, we have got the documents in front of us and we can look at that. But I think it'd be helpful to just be reminded as to what that particular policy concerns.
Okay. New development integrate with existing uses, where the operation of an existing business or facility could have significant adverse effect on a proposed new development in its vicinity. The applicant shall submit appropriate information to demonstrate that that, I have to excuse me, because it's all been crossed out, that the, I'm looking at online, that such impacts will not arise or can be prevented through suitable mitigation measures. Where such impacts will arise and cannot be avoided through mitigation, planning permission shall be refused.
Okay, right.
Is that question answered councillor Williams?
I think it is, although, yeah, we've all got it in our documents, but.
Okay. Councillor Hogburn, you want to come and ask Mrs Halliwell a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, the question is to Mrs Halliwell and probably to other people who are going to be speaking this morning. I take it that if you have objections or further comments, that those are going to be either raised at Cabinet, which will take the decision to publish these documents for further representations. So I assume that people will take that opportunity. And also, it's a kind of question also for the benefit of the officer to answer. As I see it, this board is being asked to consider the draft, but essentially, we are essentially a consultee. And we're being asked to recommend to Cabinet that various documents are approved for publication for further representations. And then in due course, in any case, the sometime in the future, an inspector will be the one who decides on inclusion or otherwise comments made at representation stage. So are you seeking, are you asking this board to make, to try and suggest some amendments? Or are you planning to go to Cabinet and onwards to make those representations? Which in any case would be appropriately made at the representation stage, if we get that far. Thank you.
Yes, I am hoping that the committee today do make amendments to the document. And yes, I am planning on making representation at Cabinet and at full council if needed.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mrs Halliwell.
Okay, just for all members of the public, all speakers, all members of the board thing. We are not here to make changes. We do not have the power to make changes to this document. We can make recommendations to Cabinet if we feel that it is appropriate. They should consider themselves to make changes to the document before it goes out to publication. Or we could decide that we wish to suggest to them that it doesn't go out to publication for a number of reasons, if we feel it needs further work. But those are matters that we will deal with in the debate. But thank you very much councillor Hogburn for asking that, because it was worrying me somewhat that perhaps some of the members of the public and those speaking this morning felt we enjoyed more power than we do as a board today. So thank you very much. If there are no more questions, I'll thank Mrs Halliwell for her question this morning. And I will now ask her to turn off her microphone. And before I go to the next speaker, just in case there is any concern, all those members of Cheshire East Council who registered to speak were called in the order they registered and were given five minutes in accordance with the council's protocols. All other speakers are similarly being called in the order they registered to speak, irrespective of their status or whom they're speaking for. And they all have three minutes to speak in accordance with the council's protocols. I do apologise if anybody was confused earlier on, but Mrs Halliwell is a town councillor and she regularly addresses various committees of this council in that capacity. And so I confused that there was an error in my script and I apologise to anybody for that error myself. So I will now call Elaine Mitchell to address the board. And can I ask Elaine to turn on her camera and microphone? She has three minutes to speak and then she may be asked questions by board members.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to raise the issue of safeguarding the land in Disley, that is FDR 1941, Landoff Jackson's Edge Road. Because I believe that it's not eligible for consideration. Cheshire East Council have wrongly assessed this land as making a significant contribution to Green Belt. In the 2013 Green Belt assessment, Landoff Jackson's Edge Road was included in land making a major contribution to Green Belt. And in 2015, land to the west of Limewood Drive, that's DS29, was assessed as making a significant contribution to Green Belt. However, the 2015 Green Belt assessment update also concluded that overall site DS29 is considered to make a major contribution to Green Belt purposes and removal of this parcel from the Green Belt will detrimentally undermine the overall Green Belt function of preventing urban sprawl. Now, both these parcels of land now make up FDR 1941. So it's hard to understand why Cheshire East have designated this as making a significant and not a major contribution to Green Belt. From the 2015 update conclusion, the development of FDR 1941 would lead to ribbon development along the main route between Disley and High Lane, contributing to urban sprawl and merging of settlements, detrimentally reducing the openness of the Green Belt. Indeed, FDR 1941 is a large plot and building on this would greatly affect the character of Disley in a way that building on a number of smaller plots would not. Consequently, there's a strong argument that this land should not be progressed to safeguarded land. And secondly, if councillors vote to strip this land of its Green Belt status now, it's absolutely possible that anything could be built on it at any time with no regard to consultation and no regard to plans put in place by Cheshire East Council. These are not usual times. And we've already seen central government override Cheshire East by ruling in favour of a development appeal in Stapley, which is in conflict with development plan policy. And this land in Disley could suffer a similar outrageous fate.
Excuse me, can I ask you to just stop for a moment, please? Because we have a problem with our live streaming, I understand. Can I just clarify that that's not an issue?
Sorry, Chair, we're going to have to adjourn the meeting while I try and find out what's going on.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. So if everybody can stay where they are. And Elaine, if you don't mind, I will be asking you to start from the beginning, just to make sure, because you may have missed your question. So please stay with us while we try and sort out. There is currently an adjournment of the board. So please, we'll adjourn for two or three minutes if anybody needs to take a comfort break. I personally just had to call for a glass of water. So if anybody needs to do that, can they please do that now? While we're dealing with the technology. Thank you. And thank you, James, for bringing this to our attention. Thank you for water. I don't need that anymore. I couldn't print Cheshire East document. I better turn this off.
Yeah, your mic was on.
Yeah, your mic was on.
Chairman, David Malcolm speaking. What we'll do is if we take the German just for 10 minutes, just to save everybody staring at their screens and waiting for us to come back. It's obviously something that we're working through the Westfield's office. So if I say, you know, to give everybody a bit of a bit more time, say, stop, stop staring at screens. If I say we'll, we'll come back at 20 to 12.
Okay, can I, can I ask all members of the, I don't know if everybody heard that. All members of the board and all visiting persons. If you can please return to us in 10 minutes so you can turn your screens off and rejoin us. Or if you don't want to risk turning the screens off, you can at least turn the camera off or your microphones. And you can go and get yourself a cup of tea or something. Okay. I will see you all again in 10 minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chair. Cheers.
Elaine, just to let you know, when we go back.
Yes.
The first thing I'm going to do is take a roll, a roll call to make sure everybody's back.
Yep.
In terms of the board, and then I'll come to you. And if you can start from the beginning again.
Okay.
Okay, well, it's because we have to be sure that everybody heard what you said. And the only way we can do that is by starting, you starting again.
Fine.
Okay.
Have you had an indication of when you will resume?
We're supposed to be resuming in a couple of minutes. So I'm hoping that somebody will come back soon. And somebody's been playing with my computer. They've been putting the arrows over it. So I assume that somebody's technical.
Alrighty.
Okay.
Apologies, Chair, we're still working on it. I can't give you a timeframe, but we are trying to get it up and running so that we don't obviously have to adjourn the meeting again. So if you can just bear with us, hopefully.
Old fashioned solution, has somebody tried to kick it?
Probably. It's just obviously, you know, it's not legal, they've not been broadcast.
No, I, I, I fully understand and I will explain that when we resume.
Okay, so as soon as I have any information, everybody's working on it, all of our team colleagues. So as soon as I get information as to when they're ready to go, I'll let you know.
And just so you're aware, I, Peter Yates called in at one stage. So I let him know what was happening.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I was speaking, yeah, I did all speaking.
Andrew's come back and said, yes, better, thanks.
And, and also David has said he can hear loud and clear. So it suggests that things are working.
Yeah, yeah, the thing is, Paul, you will be able to hear because you're in this private meeting. What we need to clarify is that people, but people can't hear now. So I have had confirmation that you can all hear me. So I think Chairman, we are ready to go. So I will take a slide down and hopefully can restart the meeting.
Okay, right, we're going to resume the meeting. And the first thing I'm going to do is have a roll call. Members may recall that I introduced this at the last meeting. It's to make sure public, the public are confident that we are still all here. So if I can ask each councillor in turn, like I did at the beginning of the meeting, to turn their camera and microphone on and confirm that they can hear and see. So that's me, not that they can hear and see themselves. So councillor Anthony Critchley.
Yeah, I can see and hear you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Steve Edgar.
Yes, I can hear you, Chair.
Councillor Ashley Farrell.
Yes, I can see and hear, Chair.
Councillor Paul Finlow.
Yes.
Councillor David Jeffrey.
Yes, Chair, I can see and hear you.
Councillor Steve Hogman.
Here I am, can see and hear.
Thank you very much, Steve. Councillor James Nicholas.
I can see and hear.
Thank you very much. Councillor Patrick Redstone. Thank you very much, councillor Patrick Redstone.
Yes, I can see and hear you Chair, thank you.
And councillor Jackie Wetherall.
Yes, I can see and hear Chairman.
And councillor Phil Williams.
Yes, I can both see and hear, thank you.
Thank you very much, can I ask you all now to turn your screens and microphones off? And I'm going to ask Elaine Mitchell to resume her presentation from the beginning please Elaine, in order that everybody can definitely hear it and we know that the public were able to hear you. So thank you very much, your understanding and if you'd start again.
Sorry Chairman, before we do, can we just check that the public speakers can all see and hear as well, just because obviously we have been down some time, so would it be okay just for me to go through the list quickly?
Yes, yeah, that's fine Sarah, if you'd like to do that, then before Elaine starts, thank you.
Thank you Chairman, can I just check, we've got councillor Bailey?
Yes, I'm still here, but I will need to leave soon, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Murphy? Was that you there councillor Murphy?
Still here, yeah.
Great, thank you, councillor David Brown?
Yeah.
Sue Hellywell?
Yeah, I'm here.
Elaine Mitchell?
Yes.
Gary Wilson?
I'm here.
Andrea Ives?
I'm here.
Michael Burdakin?
Yes, I can hear you.
Andrew Wilkinson?
Yes, I can hear you.
John Stewart?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yates? He might not be on, he was on the phone, so he might be joining later, Kevin Waite?
Present.
And finally councillor Hall. I'll try and find where he's gone.
It says that he's on my list of people, but still in the system.
Yeah, I think he was dialing in as well, so I'll try and get hold of him in a moment, okay.
Both of those speakers that are not with us at the moment are later down the agenda, so if I can now go back to. Elaine please, if you can please address the meeting, so if you can turn your screen and microphone on first, thank you, because I can't currently see you.
You can't? You can't see?
No. There, I can now, that's fine, thank you very much.
Okay, right, from the top again, I want to highlight issues in relation to the land being safeguarded at Disley. That's FDR 1941, land off Jackson's Edge Road. I believe that it's been wrongly assessed as making a significant contribution to Green Belt. In the 2013 Green Belt assessment, land off Jackson's Edge Road was included in land making a major contribution to Green Belt and that was DSL 23. In 2015, land to the west of Limewood Drive, that's DS 29, was assessed as making a significant contribution to Green Belt. However, the 2015 Green Belt assessment update also said that overall, site DS 29, and a quote. "Is considered to make a major contribution of the Green Belt purposes and removal of this parcel from the Green Belt will detrimentally undermine the overall Green Belt function of preventing urban sprawl." Both these parcels of land now make up FDR 1941, so it's hard to understand why Cheshire East have designated that. FDR 1941 is making a significant and not a major contribution to Green Belt. From the 2015 update conclusion, the development of FDR 1941 would lead to ribbon development along the main route between Disley and High Lane. And contribute to urban sprawl and the merging of the settlements, detrimentally reducing the openness of the Green Belt. FDR 1941 is indeed a large plot of land and building on it would greatly affect the character of Disley and the way that building on smaller plots of land would not. Consequently, there's a strong argument that this land should not be progressed to safeguarded land. And secondly, I want to make the point that if councillors vote to strip this land of its Green Belt status now, it's absolutely possible that anything could be built on it at any time. With no regard to consultation and with no regard to plans put in place by Cheshire East Council. These are not usual times, we've already seen central government override Cheshire East by ruling in favour of a development appeal in Stapely, which is in conflict with development plan policy. This land in Disley could suffer a similarly outrageous fate. At least one planner is pushing to develop on this land immediately and if successful with an appeal, we could see developers concreting over this green space well before 2030. With dwellings that don't fit the needs or the amenity of Disley. So in short, my argument is that the land's been wrongly assessed. It's a large parcel of land, so it makes a major contribution to Green Belt and prevention of urban sprawl. And stripping it of its status leaves it immediately vulnerable, so a planner's scramble for permission for unplanned speculative development, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, if you can stay with us a moment Elaine, are there any questions to Elaine about this, what she's just said or related matter? Councillor Redstone?
Thank you very much Chair, can I ask you, I'm sorry, I don't know much about Disley at all, but can I ask you that without this development, is Disley a sustainable settlement?
Well, I'm not a planner, but I would believe so, I mean, I don't know what the exact definition of sustainable development is. But there is an argument that the infrastructure cannot cope with more housing and I believe people are going to talk about the pollution. And the congestion on the roads further and there's also an argument that the schools and the doctor's surgery cannot cope with further housing. So if that's in the equation, then I would argue then this development would contribute detrimentally to that.
And could I ask you, are there any other developments in that immediate area that could satisfy the future development needs of Disley?
Well, I think there are smaller plots of land, for example, land at Hagbank has been discounted because it is a smaller patch of land and. My argument is that, you know, if smaller patches of land are developed on and used, they make less of a detrimental impact to the amenity of Disley in general. As I said, this is quite a large patch of land and to infill all that land on the way down to High Lane would have, as I said, a detrimental, it would have a ribbon effect and a detrimental effect on the amenity of Disley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask all councillors to ask realistic questions of the speakers please and to look into glass? I know it's very difficult because planning is a forward looking thing, but if I can ask them to do that please. And also, if you want to, members of the board, if you want to make a comment, can you please say you want to speak and raise the comment, not message me in the inbox, because that's not how we're supposed to proceed, I've just been told, so thank you. So there are no other questions, thank you very much Elaine, can you now turn off your screen and your, and thank you for your patience on this matter. Right, so I'm now going to call Gary Wilson, so if Gary can turn on his screen and his microphone please. Gary, you will have five minutes to speak, after which you may be asked questions on what you stated, so Gary.
Okay, thank you Chair, firstly, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to take part in this meeting. I believe I may have to declare interests and possible conflicts, so here they are. I'm part owner of the land in Disley that was initially slated to be safeguarded in draft one, until it was removed because of fallacious rumours of flooding. By people who were well aware that the flooding had occurred was due to a mains leak by United Utilities and nothing to do with its inability to take rainwater. I'm also an executive coach and currently work with a number of senior silver servants based in Marsham Street in London, which may be a conflict for this. I also work as a strategic consultant within the area of transportation, especially in interest in the development of electric and fuel cell vehicles, you'll understand why I've mentioned that in a moment. My concerns are numerous, so I'll be as concise as possible. This SADPD shows no evidence of any strategy, only short term tactical reactions to those that speak loudly and very few people are in that case. This may perfectly demonstrated by the claimed desire to maintain the current environment and feel of the villages within the county. But the removal of all potential housing developments in the local service centres, at least until 2030. Would create villages that are merely for the old and the infirm. As remove all potential housing developments, very similar to councillor Brown mentioned earlier. Would leave those people, young adults and children currently 12 to 22, when they're seeking to spread their wings and start families of their own. They will be forced to leave their current familiar support network, as there have been no opportunities to buy into the local housing market. So they either are locked into ever increasing rental payments, which severely reduce their ability to save for their own home, or they move into larger towns. My own daughter had to relocate from Disley to Congleton in order to find a house. So at a time when they would naturally be turning to their parents for support and guidance, especially at the time of the first child, the council will make this in the future very, very difficult. The council seems to have failed to take note of the current legislation with regard to the ceasing of the sale of ICE vehicles. ICE being internal combustion engines, so from 2030, there will be, at this very time that safeguarded lands are proposed to be opening up for the potential of housing, there will be no new petrol diesel or any form of ICE hybrid vehicle sold in the UK. So current fears of increased pollution being increased by such housing developments is fallacious. By concentrating all of the proposed developments and reserving safeguarded land to larger conurbations, this council is driving ever greater transportation congestion into already built up and congested areas. And no account seems to have been taken by the potential of increases by Her Majesty's Government's housing numbers.
Can you, Mr Wilson, can you please finish what you're about to say and then we'll.
I have it on good authority that in spite of the current rumours that there will be 15 million extra houses required in the next 10 years, that is also fallacious. The likelihood is that it will be 450,000 houses per year nationally required and any shortfall that happened over the last decade will have to be added to that. I see no information here, no flexibility for that sort of flexing in this SADPD.
Thank you very much, are there any questions to Mr Wilson? I'm not seeing any indication, I'll just check the hand bit. In that case, Mr Wilson, thank you very much for your time and for addressing us this morning, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you can turn your screen and your microphone off and that will help, thank you. I'm now going to call on Andrea Ives to address the board, so Andrea, if you can turn your screen and microphone on, you also have three minutes to speak and you may be asked questions at the end of your three minutes, Andrea.
Oh hello, thank you for allowing me to speak on this, I want to keep it simple, I just want to know why consultation has been completely disregarded. With regards to the plot off Limewood Drive and Jackson's Edge. The consultation for this piece of land and the Green Belt generally in Disley got extraordinary amounts of public support to stop that safeguarding going ahead. Far more than any other area, so I just want to know why it's, our consultation has been completely disregarded and exceptional circumstances are still, you know, up there for discussion. It just isn't the case, Elaine's told you already that it's very much, not a significant, but a major contribution. With regards to the need for homes within the Disley area, we have done some research and there are a significant number of homes that are already, when already have not been sold. And these tend to be in Disley, high end homes such as apartments, there's also 44 properties that are vacant at the moment as well. So where is this need to build extra homes in Disley? The homes that would be built on Jackson's Edge Road would not be low cost homes at all for starter families, they're more likely to be because of the area up Jackson's Edge Road, they're more likely to be high end homes. With very large prices on them, bringing in four or five cars per home. I just want, I want answers as to why our consultation, which is exceptionally high, is being disregarded.
Okay, before I go to questions, I think that in order to secure that, it is possible that Mr Malcolm might be able to address us earlier, later in that matter. But I would urge you to register to speak at the cabinet meeting and to address those questions to the portfolio holder, so she is in a position to know what you think, but also that she can answer those questions in a public. Okay, thank you very much, are there any questions for Ms Ives please? I cannot see any indication in either the chat box or any hands going up, so thank you very much, if you can now turn your screen and your camera off and continue listening to us.
Thank you.
I am now going to call, turn over the page, Mr Michael Burdakin please. Michael Burdakin, if you'd like to turn on your screen and your camera, you two have three minutes to speak and you may be asked questions at the end of it.
Thank you Chairman, my name is Michael Burdakin, I was chairman of the Bollington Neighbourhood Plan Steering Committee. And I spoke to this board a year ago to tell you that Bollington Town Council had had legal advice that the SADPD was in legal error. Because it did not comply with the National Planning Framework requirement to demonstrate exceptional circumstances to remove land from the Green Belt. While I'm pleased that the Strategic Planning Group have taken some notice of comments made on the last version of the SADPD, unfortunately, they have ignored key points made. They have accepted that there are no exceptional circumstances to justify removal of Green Belt for development within the local plan period. But equally, there is no need to remove Green Belt status from any land in the local service centres to become safeguarded either. And there are no exceptional circumstances to do this. The purpose of safeguarded land is to ensure that there will be sufficient development land available at the end of the local plan period to avoid any need to change the Green Belt boundary then. The local plan strategy identified the need for 200 hectares to cover this and has already specified 186.4 hectares in the principal towns and key service centres. Leaving a small residual figure of 13.6 hectares to be found elsewhere. The overall housing requirement for the local plan strategy is 36,000 dwellings over the full plan period from 2010 to 2030. The latest figures published by Cheshire East for housing projections during the local plan period for March 2020. Show a current total of completions, allocated sites and planning permissions of 40,120 dwellings. Thus, there is already a projected excess of 4,120 dwellings above the 36,000 requirement, halfway through the planned period to 2030. This figure of 4,120 corresponds to about 118 hectares at an average of 35 dwellings per hectare. This is over eight times the residual figure of 13.6 hectares the SADPD now seeks to allocate to the local service centres by removing Green Belt. Thus, there is already an expected substantial over provision of land for future development requirements after the end of the plan period. Such that there will be no requirement to change the Green Belt in the local service centres then. The inevitable conclusion is that there are no exceptional circumstances for removing any land from the Green Belt in the local service centres and designating it as safeguarded land. Furthermore, as far as Bollington is concerned, the specific sites chosen for safeguarding are not suitable. The Strategic Planning Group have simply re-treaded the original settlement reports arrive at the same site they recommended for development previously. In conclusion, I ask you to recommend rejection of the proposal for removing Green Belt in the local service centres to safeguard additional land. As it is unnecessary and does not comply with paragraph 3.5 and 1.36 of the National Planning Framework.
Thank you very much, any questions for Mr Burdakin? See no indication. So thank you very much, Mr Burdakin, for your speaking to us this morning. If you'd like to take your screen and your microphone off, please. Before I go to the next speaker, councillor Williams has a question to ask. Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. It's a question of protocol. A number of speakers have been advised to raise issues at Cabinet. I just want to check whether they've got time to register that. My understanding is if members want to register, it's by four o'clock this afternoon. I have an idea that people who aren't members and members of the public need longer lead time than that. I just want to make sure that the speakers who have been advised to raise issues at Cabinet will have time to do so.
Sarah, do you want to answer that question procedurally before I ask councillor Hogman to come in?
I'm just going to find out. I'll get back to you in two minutes.
Okay, so councillor Hogman, would you like to speak?
Yes, just briefly, I think there will be opportunity for people to speak at Cabinet. I think the notice period relates to questions to Cabinet members, which is another matter, but again, at the discretion, I suppose, of the leader of the council. And I would say the, the purpose of this meeting is basically to get this out to the final stage of representations. And I'm just going to repeat what I've said earlier on, that the representations which have been powerfully made in many cases do need to go, do need to be made through the process because we've reached the stage, it seems to me, where final decisions actually about many of those matters will be made eventually by the inspectors, won't they? So there is a limit to the power and references to the Strategic Planning Group ignoring this, that and the other, I would suggest, are perhaps misdirected, but I'll leave it there. I'm just urging people, get your representations in when they, you know, in writing and presumably there'll be the opportunity to later stage even to do that publicly with the inspector. So this is not the end of the process. This is just one step.
Yeah. Councillor Hogman, I fully concur with everything you've said. I would like to hope though that if there is an issue about people not being able to register, we are being lenient given that we've moved our meeting by some eight days. And if these people have been speaking initially, they would have obviously been known eight days ago that they needed to register. So I hope that the leader and other people involved in such matters would look leniently upon anybody who may have missed the deadline because they have come to us first.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, so what I'll do is I'll carry on. We've already had some delay while Sarah investigates that matter and I will now go to the next speaker. And I'm going to call Andrew Wilkinson. If he can turn on the camera and speaker. Andrew, you have, will also have three minutes and you may be asked questions afterwards. So the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr Chair. I would like to address two issues, one relating to pollution and the other relating to access to schools on site FDR 1941, which is land off Jackson's Edge Lane in Disley. I was amazed that there was no mention of pollution in this SADPD document. And it said that there would be no impact to the highways. I often cycle to work and during the rush hour, particularly in winter, I physically choke on the fumes from the stationary idling traffic in the A6. Air pollution is a major issue which needs to be mitigated in Disley before any new building should ever be considered, even considered. In this revised document, it states that the building of up to 90 new homes at site FDR 1941 will have no impact on the highways. That is not a true or accurate assessment.
Mr Wilkinson, before you go any further, is somebody in the room also listening to this? Could they perhaps turn off? Well, we have feedback and I'm just a little bit concerned that maybe it was, that was the reason, so.
I do think it's coming from me.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much. Can all members please make sure? I'm now going to turn my microphone off as well. So everybody that's not Mr Wilkinson, can you turn your mics off, please?
Mr Chair, would you like me to start from the beginning or did everybody hear?
No, no, I was just concerned that we're beginning to get some feedback. So perhaps it's, somebody's telling me it's anonymous, so I don't...
I mean, I've muted both of the people who are on the telephone lines, so that was...
That's we've discovered what the problem was. So if you'd like to, perhaps, if you want to start again, yeah, that's fine. Just to make sure that everybody's heard you clearly.
Okay, so just to start from the beginning. So I'm going to be talking about my concerns relating to pollution and access to schools on site FDR 1941, land off Jackson's Edge Lane, Jackson's Edge Road in Disley. So I was amazed that there was no mention of pollution in this SADPD document. And it said that there would be no impact to the highways. I often cycle to work and during the rush hour, particularly in winter, I physically choke on the fumes from stationary idling traffic on the A6. Air pollution is a major issue which needs to be mitigated in Disley before any new building should even be considered. In this revised document, SADPD, it states that the building of up to 90 new homes on this site, FDR 1941, will have no impact on the highways. That is not a true or accurate assessment. Disley is an air quality management area which experienced dangerous levels of NOx emissions from vehicle congestion. Levels of congestion and emissions have increased since the opening of the A555 Manchester Airport Relief Road. A6 MARR Monitoring and Evaluation Report, published this July, says that journey times through Disley have increased and noted an increase in heavy goods vehicles along the A6 mitigation area through Disley. Up to 90 new homes will undoubtedly have the effect of increasing traffic congestion and emissions and represent an increased threat to health, wellbeing and life expectancy of local residents. This is in conflict with the Cheshire East Low Emission Strategy, which encourages developers to understand the importance of protecting local air quality and their role in mitigating any impact from development. Disley is in the unique position of being located in a valley which traps pollutants in place. This proposal takes note of the unique character and topography of Disley. Indeed, Cheshire East's Air Quality Action Plan of 2018 says at the site CE16, the Crescent in Disley, emissions need to be reduced by 45% to achieve national NOx objectives. This is the third highest in the county as stated in the table 3.1 of the Air Quality Action Plan. This will be difficult to mitigate as the A6 is the main arterial trunk road and is increasingly used as a link from the east of the country into the motorway network. Simply put, there should be no new building in Disley until a relief road is built. NOx blocking paint will not do the job. Disley scores red on the appraisal for proximity to a high school, signalling a significant failure to meet the minimum standard. The attachment school is Pointon High and it is understood that this increase in journey, there is an increase in journey time along the A6 between Disley and High Lane has resulted in the school bus from Disley to Pointon being unreliable with local journey times. I'd like to just finish then. Our green spaces are important and we should all do our best to protect them. And I'd also like to raise, lastly, there seems to be a presumption that this is actually going ahead to Cabinet, whereas my understanding was that actually this committee had the option of actually being able to stop this before it went to Cabinet. So I would like to just make that final point.
Sorry, Mr Wilkinson, you are correct. We could choose to make representations that we don't concur that it should go forward for consultation. We can make that representation. But the final decision lies with the Cabinet. So and it is already on the agenda for next week. So we can't stop it being on the agenda, but we can make things that we might, we could determine not that we do not think it should go forward at this time. We could do that. That is an option. Okay, thank you very much. Right, are there any questions to Mr Wilkinson? There aren't any. So thank you very much, Mr Wilkinson. If you can turn your microphone and your screen off. Thank you very much. I'm now going to call John Stewart. If he could please turn on his screen and his microphone. Mr Stewart, you have three minutes to speak, after which you might be questioned by members of the board.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. My name's John Stewart. I'm speaking as a resident of Bolington. I'm actually a town councillor in Bolington and the town mayor, but today I'm speaking as a member of the public. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, Chairman. I have a couple of things to state as a resident of Bolington. First, I'm very pleased that the SPB has taken into account the overwhelming opinion of the residents of Bolington. Bolington was assigned as one of the 13 local service centres identified at the time, that there was no justification to remove Green Belt status, thus not allowing Green Belt to be put up for development. I believe there's no justification because there were no exceptional circumstances proved my Cheshire East council to do so. However, secondly, I'm rather disappointed that Cheshire East council has ignored completely the views of the Bolington community with regard to two plots of Green Belt land designated Bowl 1 and Bowl 2 on the map. It wants to safeguard these two tracts of land for development after 2030. This looks just like a regurgitation of the settlement report from the previous version of the SADPD. In your own rules, Green Belt land will not be designated unless there are exceptional circumstances as required by the National Planning Policy Framework for removal of Green Belt status. To me, it seems to me that you've failed to demonstrate there are exceptional circumstances. So your proposal to read Belt as safeguarded land is therefore invalid. I object in the strongest possible terms to this proposal and would urge you to recommend to Cabinet to reverse this wholly unsatisfactory proposal to allocate these two tracts of Green Belt land as safeguarded for development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to Mr Stewart? There don't appear to be any. So thank you very much. If you can turn your screen and your camera off. Thank you for joining us today. I'm now going to ask Peter Yates to join us. So if, Mr Yates, you can turn on your microphone. I don't believe you have a camera or if you do, you have that as well. And you will also have three minutes. Mr Yates? I'm going to, Mr Yates? You appear to be muted.
... and come back in again in the same way that you gained by hanging up on the phone and calling the number and I can admit him again, but I can't unmute him. And I think that might be the same for town councillor Huff. They're both on mute. So unless they unmute themselves on the phone, they'll have to log back in.
I'm going to go to Mr Kevin Waits next. And if I can ask both Mr Yates and town councillor Huff if they can ensure that their screens are not muted or they're muted, because otherwise they won't be able to speak to us. So I'm now going to ask Kevin Waits to address the board. Mr Waits, can you turn your screen and your microphone on? You have three minutes and you may be questioned at the end of it.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think I'm on. Firstly, thank you for allowing me to speak at this meeting today in relation to the revised SADPD of Cheshire East, particularly in relation to the safeguarding of land off Jackson's Edge Road, Disley, that being the parcel of land FDR 1941. Firstly, I'd like to state that I am a resident of Disley, albeit I'm relatively new to the area, having only lived here for a few years. But in that very short space of time, I've seen a significant negative change to the area. In the last census for Disley, the village had just over 4,000 residents. In the last few years, Disley has added a number of new residential developments to swell that number. In fact, by the end of this year, Disley will have completed the build of over 200 new dwellings. Conservatively, we can assume therefore that this will represent an additional 600 residents or 50% growth in the population with no prior or proposed investment in transport, education, healthcare or retail facilities. I have seen traffic increase to unsustainable levels due to the opening of the A255 passing the M56 and M6. And the mix of traffic has changed from being light goods and cars to a significant proportion of heavy haulage and large articulated lorries which are passing through a small village with narrow pedestrian walkways. Notwithstanding the dangers this inherently presents to this situation, I'd also like to support councillor Murphy's earlier comment that the location proposed safeguarded land would require all the new residents to cross this congested main road to access public transport, retail facilities, doctors, pharmacy and school. Adding more residents to this village with such poor infrastructure is a disaster waiting to happen. Indeed, I'd like to make the councillors aware that already since the opening of the A255 and the increase in heavy traffic, we've had one fatality in the village on the road where a truck collided with a bus and one of those involved was killed. I've been unable to find a plan to underpin and improve transport and management, traffic management for Disley and the surrounding area, either within the SADPD or within its supporting documents. I'd also like to add, I've got two primary aged children. I'm moving to Disley. I tried to place them into Disley Primary School, but this was not possible due to a lack of places. My children now have to be driven to school in the Stockport area. And this would be exactly the same scenario any new resident in Disley would face. Indeed, the lack of schooling is a red light for the use of land for purposes in the SADPD. So I would urge the council to recommend the exclusion of the Jackson's Edge site for safeguarding in the plan on the basis that Disley already has delivered a conservative 15% increase in residential capacity, some properties of which still remain unsold. I would further ask the board to recommend the exclusion of Jackson's Edge land in the plan on the basis the area cannot stand for any increase in traffic levels, pollution levels are high and we cannot safely navigate this town. In addition to the undisputed fact that this proposal will remove Green Belt land, which provides a significant, if not major, contribution to the local environment. I believe that safeguarding land on Jackson's Edge contributes strategic priority two, three and four. I would also note that Mr Malcolm at the start of this meeting stated that the housing needs have been met. No exceptional circumstances exist for the use of Green Belt. So I would ask why it should be included, safeguarding our Green Belt seems to be a byword for remarking the development and this is wholly inappropriate for the Disley village. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to Mr Waits? The indication is not. So thank you very much, Mr Waits, for joining us and for your patience. Thank you. I'm now going to go back to Mr Peter Yates to see whether or not he is able to connect now. Mr Yates?
Hopefully you can hear me, can you?
I can hear you. I hope the rest of the board can. If you'd like to go ahead, you have three minutes. And if you, at the end of that, you may be asked questions.
I'm speaking on behalf of Presbury Lane Residents Group, who wish to see the Presbury Lane site retained in the Green Belt and not identified as safeguarded land. So what I'm going to say is relevant to all safeguarded land in North Cheshire. Safeguarded land is land taken out of the Green Belt for long term development. To take land out of the Green Belt, there has to be exceptional circumstances, and this wording is important, which are fully evidenced and justified. This means all reasonable options have to be examined. The revised site allocations document takes the figure of 200 hectares of safeguarded land as fixed in the local plan process. This is not correct. The amount of sites that safeguarded land has not been reviewed or that's happened as it's been redistributed. So of the 200 hectares, over 93% has already been found in the North Cheshire towns. According to the council, it's therefore only got to find 13.6 hectares. However, no attempt has been made to follow the advice in the National Planning Policy Framework to provide a fully evidenced and justified case for this figure. Without this, there can be no exceptional circumstances to take the land out of the Green Belt. The figure of 200 hectares was based at a time four or five years ago when housing requirement and supply figures were very different from the recent record house building years. There is also no reference to 200 hectares in the policies of the local plan. There is nothing fixed in the local plan about the need to provide additional safeguarded land in local service centres. In fact, the wording of PG3 and PG4 says it may be necessary to identify additional land strategic sites. This wording clearly establishes the need to undertake an up to date and fully evidenced case for justifying the removal of the land from the Green Belt in local service centres. This has not taken place. The residual figure of 13.6 hectares has been taken as given and the revised allocations document has merely looked as how it should be distributed. The recent High Court case involving Air Borough The recent High Court case involving Airborough Neighbourhood Development Forum and Leeds City Council is particularly relevant as it establishes the need for a reconsideration of proposed green belt changes where there have been fundamental changes to housing requirements and supply as in East Cheshire. In light of this, the national planning advice and the policies in the local plan statement, the need for further safeguarded land should be reconsidered before consultation takes place on the revised site allocations document. Thank you.
Beaming to Chairman.
Thank you very much. I think that was perfectly timed, Mr. Yates. Are there any questions for Mr. Yates? I'm not seeing any indication. So thank you very much, Mr. Yates, for joining us this morning and for your patience. Can I now finally go to Town Councillor Derek Huff? If Mr. Huff can now please turn on his microphone, address the committee. After three minutes, Mr. Huff, you may have a, sorry, councillor Huff, you may have questions asked of the members of the board. Councillor Huff, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. My technology doesn't work very well, so I'm on a telephone. And it's nice to see so many people who I knew in my days on Cheshire East. I will not go into a great debate on the overall plan. I think that's been done to death. I shall speak solely from Alsager. It largely fits in with the town submissions and the neighbourhood plan. We believe, and David Malcolm confirms this by his dates, that the Cheshire East Council have used the 2012 version of the N P F rather than the more recent 2019. This obviously is because the A S A D B started before 2019. However, the 2019 edition contains significant changes, particularly in town centre development and encourage the social role of the town centres rather than concentrating solely on retail. The recent changes in retail are the result of modern technology, not the pandemic. And your own Professor Cathy Parker, who is your regeneration consultant and works for Macclesfield concluded, we are convinced that high streets and town centres will survive in 2030 if they adapt, become activity-based, sorry, based gathering spaces where retail is a smaller part of a wider range of uses. We believe that Cheshire East have not considered these more up-to-date comments. Now specifically, compared to the existing town centre map, which is based on the Congleton Borough, they have removed the Wesley Place Church, United Reform Church, both of which are not only churches but meeting places. Likewise, they've removed the fire station, which also provides meeting rooms. They've removed Milton Park, which features in nothing but leisure activities.
Mr. Huff, if you can please wind up and give your final point. Thank you.
Thank you. Alsager Town Council have commissioned a public realm programme, cost £30,000, which has been delayed, and bid for town centre manager. We need the town centre to remain as it is for us to go forward as a growing town. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to Town Councillor Huff? Councillor Williams.
Okay, thank you for your questions, Councillor Huff. I'm hoping that you can have some debate on the issues of town centres and what was described earlier by councillor Bailey as village envelopes. I just want to clarify some issues, if I may, with the specific points that you raised about Alsager. Milton Park, nobody's expecting that to be grubbed up and built on, although cynics would say that lots of other spaces in Alsager have been built on. But I just want to clarify a little bit on your comments about the inclusion of Milton Park and the two churches that you mentioned in terms of look at development. Is that, is it your view that there might be opportunities in the future for the town to sort of make bids for events or more general issues other than retail? What's your particular interest in having these designated within the town council? And what do you feel the benefits of doing so would be?
The major benefit for the Milton Park is that in the public realm consultation, it could be designated as a mini bus station. At the moment, if you want to catch a bus, you stand out in the rain. We've got nowhere. Now, the public realm suggests using part of Milton Park. Now, other, so that would be one. The second issue is that we do put large events on. Now, Milton Park is ideally situated. It is flat. It is, it is, people can go there. And so it fits in with the modern definition of a town centre. It is a meeting floor. Now, next to the Milton Park is the fire station. There is also a public toilet. Now, we want to include that as a town centre bed. Now, what I didn't come, we did put in a bid for money, government money. Unfortunately, Cheshire East, they concentrated on Macclesfield and Crewe and got nothing. Well, that's not terribly good. So those are the reasons. Now, I've been listening to the debate and it's very much like my life. My first girlfriend came from Jackson's Edge. My family come Bolington. Those of you town councillors. I worked for Heathcoats in Bolington, so I know all those areas. So when you're talking in terms of 400 houses, hang on a minute. Somebody mentioned Alsager earlier.
Councillor, councillor, sorry, sorry, councillor Huff, can you make sure you are answering the question that you were asked and not addressing the wider issues, please?
Chairman, you weren't on the Cheshire East for long enough to know that I ramble.
I wasn't suggesting anything.
Right. Nice to see you anyway.
Thank you very much. Any other questions to councillor, Town Councillor Huff?
So.
Councillor Williams?
Yeah, might I suggest that we put questions to the officers about town centre designations and the reasons for that? Because I do think that amidst the rambling, there is a serious point there about the non-retail aspect and the wider use of of town centres, not just for retail but for other purposes as well. And I think that there is an issue that I would like to see debated when the time comes and for officers to give us some explanations on those issues.
Councillor Williams, just in case people think that you're being pro-keal, that issue has also been raised in the chat box by another member. So if I can ask officers to address that when we get to the pre-debate answering. So that piece will be. And I am aware that Mr. Malcolm suggested earlier that he might not want to do this, but I think there have been a number of issues that were raised, and I'm not talking about site-specific matters that have been raised that I think need to be addressed. So thank you very much, councillor Williams. Have you finished? Yes?
If I might say that it is an issue for other towns, but I don't know the other towns well enough.
No, that's fine, councillor Huff, that you are speaking.
All I would say is that it is of vital importance that we retain the town centre that we have at the moment and we don't remove all these meeting points as has been recommended by the officers.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much, councillor Huff, and enjoy the rest of your day, Derek. I think that brings us to the end of public speaking. I think it must be a bit of a record, particularly since I've been a member of the board. But I think we now need, if I can ask Mr. Malcolm, no, before I go to Mr. Malcolm, I do know that Sarah has an answer to the question asked earlier regarding the protocol for speaking at Cabinet. Sarah.
Thank you, Chairman. I have managed to contact my colleague Paul Mountford, who is responsible for servicing Cabinet. He's confirmed that the deadline to register as a public speaker for Cabinet was on Wednesday and that councillors can still register to speak until four o'clock today. All I could suggest is if anyone is wanting to speak, perhaps email Paul Mountford and it would be, I suppose, at the discretion of the leader of the council if he's willing to accept any late requests to speak.
I will also send an email to the leader of the council, in my capacity as chairing this meeting, to say that I feel it was appropriate for those people who have yet to register to do so, given that they would have been advised of this at Strategic Planning Board, had the Strategic Planning Board taken place on its originally scheduled date. Or this item took place on the originally scheduled date of the meeting. So I will do that after the meeting, after this meeting. Okay, so we now have finished the public speaking period. So if I can ask Mr. Malcolm to respond to any points he feels are pertinent to our debate.
Thanks, Chairman. Obviously, there's many, many comments within the speakers. I'll just try and run through them as people spoke. My desire to sort of not answer, well, not answer questions was more about a detailed matter of reference to the evidential base that there is. For each town, for example, local service centre, there's a settlement report. There's obviously evidential base information within the, as you've referred to, in the sort of the library that will accompany the S A D P D. So it was more an issue about just getting into the very specifics. But there are a number of points that are of a similar theme, mostly around the safeguarded land, if I'm honest, that have come out from the speakers. So I'll just quickly run through as much as I can do and then I'm sure members will, you know, push me if I've missed something anyway. So just bear with me. I'll just try and run through the main issues. To start it off with some concern about removal, I think particularly for the safeguarded land in Disley, for example, was a common theme coming out. And effectively, how the methodology and the concerns around there, particularly, I think it's shared also by how comments were disregarded, et cetera. Just on that one in respect of Disley, there is a, I think it's, again, this is where there's, within the library is a document E D 56, which deals with all the key issues and responses and how those responses to the original consultations have been taken account of. So in terms of just dealing with the Disley issue in terms of safeguarded land, which is a common theme also for both Bolington and also Presbury. As indicated in my initial sort of introduction, there has been a reassessment of safeguarded land as part of the reassessment of allocated sites. And therefore that has meant that those sites have been reviewed using methodology. There's a number of points around that. I alluded to sort of some of them about the level and services facilities, the impact on the green belt, the other constraints, landscape quality, heritage impacts, assets, et cetera, and the site opportunities. So there has been a reassessment of those, which does mean that absolutely there has been some changes, particularly in the likes of Bolington, et cetera. I think the key point now also, which was brought up towards the end, I think by Mr. Yates, is that the S A D P D is part two of a plan. It's a non-strategic plan, but what we do have is, as referenced to the 200 hectares being referred to at a local plan strategy stage. That was, so the safeguarded land and the exceptional circumstances for that safeguarded land was established through the local plan strategy. The exceptional circumstances were stated by the inspector in his final report. So it's not correct to say that those circumstances don't exist. I made reference in opening about the circumstances required to remove the sites for allocations of housing. So there are two distinct points that members will just need to be aware of in terms of, yes, it relates to the same point about exceptional circumstances and the green belt, but there are particular reasons why we are making the approach that we have and it is evidenced accordingly. So in terms of the Disley issue, I appreciate the comments were made about the traffic, the need for housing, pollution, the air quality management area. You know, the actual site in Disley, again, we're not getting into specifics, but it does sit outside the air quality management area. Air quality was considered in the assessments, but it's also, just to take it back a stage, the safeguarded land is in effect for the future planning. It isn't part of this plan. We don't know whether it will be coming forward. We don't know what it will be coming forward for. It's not correct, which one speaker said, that it would be something that would come forward potentially without consultation. Any application that came forward on that land would be subject to application submission and consultation. So it's not correct to say it would go through without consultation. So I think in terms of safeguarded land, I think that deals with it in terms of, say, the report clarifies why we've changed the approach. There's the evidence bases there within the documents. And as I, I think it's evidential document 53 deals with the safeguarded land. And there's also comments in there as well. So I know that's a point that's been raised and there's consistency between Disley and Bolington. You know, I think it is worth remembering, particularly for Bolington, is that it's safeguarded land. We don't feel there's sufficient justification for how sites and those have been removed. But we have got safeguarded land. I think that moves on to the points that a number of speakers also mentioned was kind of the reverse of what was sort of being proposed, is that are we sure about taking those sites out of the local service centres? And just to pick up on a point that I think one of the members talked about is that the local service centre designation isn't being removed. It exists. It's still there. All we're doing is removing a number of allocations for no local service centres. And just to put it in context, which again is within the report, we're actually only talking about 290 houses out of 36,000 or actually more than 36,000, as you've heard. So I think in terms of the context and the concerns about whether it's going to undermine housing land supply and the comments that were raised early on. We have a stronger housing land supply. We know the stately decision that was raised recently questioned that and it set a range up to about 6.6 years. We're reviewing our housing monitoring at the moment and obviously that will come out. And there may well be a minor, an impact caused by recent events, COVID impact. But we still are in a very strong and robust position. So we have no reason to believe, when you look at, we're only talking about potentially 290 houses, that there is any reason to question this will suddenly impact on the housing land supply position to an extent where we get back to the days of unplanned development. So I'm comfortable with that approach. I think there was an element about impact on neighbour plans as well that cropped up earlier on and certainly in terms of the schemes that are put forward and the overall S A D P D, again, referred to in your report. We have done a significant amount of engagement, both through our neighbourhood plans. There are many people that have been involved throughout the town and parish councils and the town and parishes that have done a great deal of work in terms of bringing their neighbour plans together, which has been great. I have no qualms in saying that those won't change. There's been a significant amount of engagement through the neighbour plan process, which then has led on to some of those engagements through the S A D P D. So we're not expecting any significant adverse impacts on neighbour plans as a result. Talked about the issue about the windfall sites. Again, we're comfortable and are happy to suggest that the windfall sites themselves will be able to deliver those additional houses. And so it is only those 290 that we're actually referring to if you get to the numbers. I think it's also worth mentioning that we already rely, I think, on 125 houses per annum are delivered through the windfall route. are delivered through the windfall route as part of our supply. Just in terms of, there was comments about sustainability and whether Disley was a sustainable site. It is a sustainable village. Yes, there are pressures on, on facilities and infrastructure like there are in many areas, but the whole point of having a set plan and a strategy is to deliver those ideally at the same time, which is not always possible. But ultimately, that's the way we wanted to try and deliver these things in a planned way. But Disley is certainly a sustainable site. It's got facilities locally, it's got fully transport connections, et cetera, it's got the schools. Just trying to flick through any further comments, so. Yeah, I think comments about that we don't need any more housing because we've already, we've already had sort of 40,000 potentially in terms of the estimated numbers, et cetera. It's worth noting that the 36,000 is what we're proposing to deliver, but it isn't a maximum. And therefore, you know, we are able to go above that figure if we, if we are needed to. I think generally speaking, those, I think probably cover the main themes. I think that the points I just wanted to get across was, yes, we're aware of the issues over the safeguarded land, and we do have the evidence base for that. Yes, we're comfortable with removing the sites that were previously allocated because of the number of houses that we've delivered already and the number of houses that are proposed. And we don't think that the test for exceptional circumstances is there for the delivery of those, those additional 290 odd houses. I think the final point, Chair, is just to sort of the context of this, and I think it has been picked up by a few speakers, is just what SPB are being asked to do is to effectively, if you like, continue this on its route to Cabinet and recommend to Cabinet that documents were approved for publication so that representations can then be made through a further period of six weeks. There is a danger evidently, if we start to make significant changes at this stage, then the plan would be considered to be something that could be then unsound, and that could lead to further delays in terms of the process and getting out to further representation. So it is only a sort of, a sort of, you know, it's an interim position. The plans and the proposals at the moment only have limited weight, if very little at all, because we haven't, we're going through the process, but we're not even at examination stage, we're not even out to final approval from Cabinet or even full council as yet. So in effect, it's the concerns about what may happen between now and the plan being adopted and the changes that have been made. It will just be down to normal factors of if people want to submit applications that aren't either in an allocated site or are potentially conflict policies, then they would have to be assessed in the normal way. And again, that's part of the normal planning process when we have policies in place and emerging policies coming forward. So I think that's probably all I have for the moment, Chair. Like I said, happy to try and pick up some and clarify any further points that the members have as much as I'm able to. Thank you.
Well, Mr Malcolm, you might not be surprised to know that I have already got three speakers listed who want to ask a question. So in the order that they presented to me, I'm going to ask councillor Hogman to go first.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Very early on today, there was a suggestion that the SADPD had been delayed and should have happened sooner. That was the kind of inference, and certainly there's public statements have been made to that effect. So I suppose question one, is it fair to say or not that the progress of this SADPD was, was it affected by the local plan strategy being paused at a much earlier stage? In other words, does its progress depend on the timely adoption of a local plan in the first place? That's question one. Question two. Green Belt safeguarded land, I find that a bit of a misnomer in some ways, because the question is, for whose benefit is it being safeguarded? And is it being, it's been safeguarded by the looks of it for the purposes of a future plan, which will probably come into being after I'm probably not breathing as well as I am now. You know, after sort of 2030 or thereabouts, perhaps later even. And I'd just like to ask the very basic question. Do we actually need to have safeguarded lands anywhere within our local plan, reference to it, within our SADPD? The LPS was approved three years ago, so it exists there. But is it actually needed, particularly since a point has been made variously that we've got several years of the housing development, blah, 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 the land supply. Some saying it's too much and some saying it's not enough. But it's several years worth, maybe five or six, seven years worth. So that's the second one. Do we actually need to continue referring to safeguarded land in the green belt? Which actually amounts to being the contrary, to saying we might get, might want to use it for housing or something else. Third one is a question from my, our old friend, town councillor Derek Huff. I was pleased to hear him say that he's a rambler. I know exactly what he means and other members here do too. I'm a bit prone to that myself. But he did make an interesting point, which was about the use, which MPPF version is being used, 2012 or 2019? Are we satisfied that the latest version of that document, that framework is being used? And finally, if we didn't recommend anything, or we said we don't think it should go forward, would it, is it a possible outcome that the, that this current version, the current version unchanged or a previous one might finish up going straight to an inspector after due approval by council? Particularly in view of earlier comments about the terrible delay to this SADPD. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you answer those questions, Mr Malcolm, or do you want to get all the questions together and come back at the end?
I think you might be better to, well, I was going to say come back at the end, probably.
Okay, that's fine. Before we go any further, sorry, David.
Sorry, it was just about duplication really, I suppose. If those are, I'm happy to answer those questions. So if other members had the same question, then obviously they don't need to ask it, and I'll address that if that helps.
Okay, right. Just so, before we go to do that, two things. Firstly, councillor Finlow, I'm aware you've got your hand raised, so I'll add you to my list of speakers. And secondly, a point has just come into my head, which is worrying. We're all being asked to make comments today, and yet we're all members of the council. If we make comments today, does that predispose our ability to make comments at council? If Miss Dillon can perhaps answer that question.
Hello, Chair. I wouldn't say that it did, because a document of this nature has a very long evolution, and many members will make comments as it proceeds and changes. So I don't expect anybody to be making a comment on the lines of, over my dead body, my view will never change. As the document changes, people's minds will be open, you know, until we reach a more final point in front of full council.
Thank you very much for that clarification. So, Mr Malcolm, if you want to address the questions raised by councillor Hogman, and then we're, just in case they are going to be duplicated, I will then go to the other speakers, of which, whom I now have five. So, Mr Malcolm.
Oh, okay, Chair. So in terms of the, I think, first point about the delays to the SADPD. I mean, ultimately, what, we go back to last August, when effectively, as indicated in your report, the stage going back to sort of the last publication draft, subject to that consultation period, 19th August to 30th September. Effectively, what we've done is that we've taken on board some of the comments that were raised during that consultation process. And, you know, to an extent, we've taken those on board, and actually, we've come out with an updated version of the plan. So, yes, there's been a delay in that perspective, but actually, it's part of almost due diligence. We've responded to the comments that have been received out of the consultation process, and we've made some changes. So I see it actually as a, well, yes, there is a delay, but for us, it's an entirely sort of healthy part of the process, really, in terms of responding to concerns. You know, clearly, there's only so far that we can go with that, and we're not recognising all the concerns, et cetera. But, you know, we've gone forward, and that's required us to, as you've heard, and it does have an impact in some of the additional points you're talking about. But it basically, so, yes, there's been a delay. It's a fact of life that we went out once before. We're going, we were proposing to go, to go, to back out for the representations prior to the examination. So there's been a delay on that point. I think in terms of the safeguarded land, there's not too much more I can say about it. I mean, the, the local plan strategy, and I think this is the point that we need to recognise, is the local plan strategy, and I don't want to complicate this matters, but it's almost akin to that through outline approval. In effect, when we're dealing with planning applications, the local plan strategy has set out certain things about the strategy that Cheshire East will have. And effectively, the SADPD, as we talked at the start of the meeting, is a sort of a daughter document to the local plan strategy. And therefore, we have to work within the local plan strategy. There's a huge amount of safeguarded land that's been set aside, and we're only looking at the 13.6, I think, hectares to be provided through this plan, but we do need to provide it because that was what came through the local plan strategy. So it is needed, and that's why we've proposed what we have. In terms of the MPPF, we'll be using the latest version, I think, as has been alluded to, and as was picked up on some of the comments about the retail stuff, which I think is, you know, very person. It's an ever-changing policy environment, policy framework that we're working within. And you'll see, we've done an update on the retail, for example, retail study. So we are very much using the most up-to-date MPPF that, you know, we would be doing. But as, and again, as you've seen, we're also picking up the changes that have even come out of the youth classes or the changes, which were only implemented at the start, sorry, start of September, end of August. And so it's very much a sort of, you know, line in the sand has to be drawn at the point of time. And I think in terms of the final point, I think it was about your, what happens if we don't make, if SPB doesn't make any recommendation? Well, clearly, that's, at the moment, we don't have a part two of the plan in place. And if you're talking, or if you have concerns about delaying the process, then clearly, that's potentially not a good way to go. Clearly, it's up to SPB members to kind of give their views to Cabinet, that's why it's here. But also, the recommendation is to recommend it. If members want to come up with a different recommendation than that, then obviously that will get fed back to Cabinet. There is, you know, we want to get on and make some new policies in as soon as possible, because the longer that we don't have certain things in place, you know, there can be a degree of uncertainty. And I think particularly for some aspects of the policy, so maybe some of the Gypsy travel sites. But also, there are some more detailed policies in the SADPD that, you know, we want to get in place because we want to make sure we can use those and start to apply those for planning applications as well. So, so yeah, entirely SPB's discretion, I guess, but yeah, there would be potential implications if we, if we just decide to sort of not do anything and just, well, we'll sit on it. And so I'd certainly recommend that we don't do that. Thank you, Chair.
I'm assuming councillor Hogman, at this stage, you don't want to come back on that?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to go to, just before I do, I'm going to go to councillors Geoffrey Redstone, Edgar Williams, Finlow and Nicholas, in that order. Councillor Geoffrey.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, so I've got, what, one, two, three, five questions. So the first one, it's carrying on from David Brown's comment when he was speaking. So has the development today been adequately dispersed across the borough to avoid a lack of sustainability of local service centres? So if we're, if we're taking the developments out of certain areas, have they had enough to keep themselves sustainable? So that's something I don't think's been answered yet. Then following on from Elaine Mitchell's comment about the Disley site on Jackson Edge Road, regarding whether it's been incorrectly allocated, should it be a major contribution instead of significant? If it's major, then I've got a bit of a problem with allocating it. Next, what, yeah, we'll go, a minor point, just a clarification. Policy HOU4 about the HMOs. What's the basis of the maximum 10% of dwellings being HMOs? Because my thinking is, if it's, for example, a student area, you might want more than that. Is that flexible, that policy, just the basis of the 10% restriction? Next one is, now, I'm dragging this up from the hearings for the local plan strategy a long, long time ago, but is the inspector likely to throw this out as being unnecessarily constraining or not pro-growth enough? I've got a recollection that some of the earlier criticism was, they needed the growth figure bumping up because it was unnecessarily constraining. Is an inspector likely to see it that way if we've taken this development out for safeguarded land? And really, my main concern is point five. So following on from Michael Burdakin and Peter Yates, do the exceptional circumstances exist? Now, noting what David's just been saying, and I've been researching here, so I've got scribblings everywhere. But the 13.6 hectares in the SADP that we're dealing with. Now, going into the local plan and the evidence base, seeing that that is taking the kind of, the 1,800 houses a year and taking it forward over a nine-year period. Now, that's based on the 1,800 a year. Now, the evidence base now says, using the standard methodology, that should be reduced down to 1,068 a year. So if we were to do that, doing a simple ratio, that would come out to me nearer eight hectares instead of 13.6. I'm not kind of buying into, the local plan strategy says we need to have 13, well, it doesn't say we need to have 13.6. Well, I can't find it anywhere in the, in the document anyway. I know it's in the evidence base, but not in the actual approved document, so it. I, I'm thinking we should be using the latest information available rather than what we said on, in data that was produced five, six, seven, eight years ago, which was pre-Covid, pre-Brexit, pre-everything really. So I just, I need some more evidence to say that the 13.6 is what we need going forward. I mean, taking it further than that, Michael Burdakin said that we've got enough going up to 2030 to cover the period after the plan. But I think we probably do need some safeguarded land. But I don't, at the moment, I'm not to it being the full amount that we're saying. So could David provide some further detail on that, on the justification? Thank you.
Okay, Mr Malcolm, do you want to answer those questions, or do you want to wait until the other members have spoken?
No, I think I need to just clarify these.
That's fine. Yeah, okay. That's fine, yeah, okay.
Going to go round and round in circles on the same issue, unfortunately, I suspect. I think in terms of the development dispersal sustainability, again, I just need to put the context on this in terms of the sites that we're removing. It's 290 houses potentially out of 36,000. So all of the issues that were raised in terms of the impact this is going to have on sustainability of local service centres, we're no longer having local service centres, that's not the case, they still exist, they still form part of the local plan strategy. And therefore, the issues over how those were originated in the first place, in terms of their sustainability, appraisals, are these sustainable sites? The hierarchy that we have between our key towns all the way out to other settlements in those rural areas, it's not changing, that does not change, and it won't change as a result of the SADPD. And I think, just to sort of pick up this theme, that the SADPD basically, as I say, is a sister document to the local plan strategy. So the concerns around the housing numbers, the figures of, you know, the safeguarded land, they have all been set, if you like, through the local plan strategy. And that's kind of what I was saying when, when I was alluding to, saying, well, it's almost akin to an outline planning application when dealing with reserve matters. This is very much the detail, it's the non-strategic sites. So the strategic sort of elements to the local plan have already been outlined. And that's evident by, if you look at the policies within the SADPD, they're all about the detail, the development management policies that we use on a day-to-day basis. They're talking about the energy policies that we talked about, improving things for climate change. I do get that the issues over the safeguarded land are seen as sort of important for residents, and I completely understand that, but in terms of the Disley site, that it's been incorrectly allocated, been incorrectly allocated according to the evidence base that we've assessed it on, there will be a different view on it, in the same way as there may be a different view on a planning application, but that's where we've, we've made that judgment, and we don't believe that to be the case. I think in terms of the, to be honest, I'm not going to get drawn on the detail of the HMO, I mean, that's come through from, you know, the policies that's, you know, if I start getting into detail of every single policy, then, you know, we'll need two or three weeks to do that. The evidence bases are there to support the details of it. The HMO, something is something that's been quite recently anyway, and as, if you refer to the sort of the papers that we had around the SPD, that talked about the, you know, how we've, how we've reached this, the figures and the 10%, I think was in there. So perhaps councillor Geoffrey, if you refer back to that, that'll give you a little bit more indication of how we've got to that. I wasn't quite sure a bit about the, I think he's talking about the consistency of the plan, but I think that's the point I'm picking up in terms of the local plan strategy, perhaps maybe come back on that in a second. But again, going back to the exceptional circumstances, I'm not going to get into a bit debate over housing land supply and standard methodology, but the local plan sets out how many houses that we're proposing as part of the growth strategy that Cheshire East is having. The latest housing figures are actually back to 1784, they're not, you know, our figures are 1800 a year. And the standard methodology, yes, it did indicate 1,000, but the latest figures is, again, part of all of the assessments, all of the consultation documents, and all of the coming through from government at the moment, put the figures potentially back up to 1784, which is just short of the 1800 that we have. So I probably can't go into much more detail than I've said, but I'm happy to just pick up the point you were referring to about the consistency of the plan, councillor Geoffrey, and whether that deals with that, it is a local plan strategy?
Consistency, which, oh, rather about it being unnecessarily constraining?
Oh, sorry, that might, my, sorry, yes. My scribblings while your questions were coming out. No, I think, and I guess that's the point, it's because it sits within the local plan strategy, it's not something that would be considered to be too constraining, because I say, the numbers of houses that we're looking at. If you like, the wider constraints have already been set out for the local plan strategy, we've looked at the non-strategic, so those smaller allocations, and we've only got a limited number of allocations still going forward, plus that safeguarded land. So, no, I think, you know, we believe it won't be considered to be too constraining, that it's therefore considered to be unsound, and we believe it's in accordance with the local plan strategy.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Geoffrey, you look bemused, you want to come back?
Yeah, I'm just a bit concerned, David, that you're saying you're not going to be drawn on justifying the 13.6. It was justified back in the day, but surely we should be using up-to-date need, because that's what it's based on, isn't it, need? It's, we identified the need for a certain number of houses, and then we've said, we'll do 1,800 houses up to 2030, and then we'll roll that out for, or rather, the, not necessarily 1,800 houses, but the, where was, the number of hectares for housing and for commercial. 36,000 houses and 380 hectares equates to a certain amount of land each year, and then post-2030, we'll, we'll carry that on for another nine years. That's, that's where we get the original safeguarded land figure from, wasn't it? So from 2030, should we not be reviewing that figure to see whether we still believe that post-2030, we can, we should be continuing at that same rate? I've not seen evidence challenging that, that assumption, that the same rate up to 2030 should be used, the rate for the local service centres should continue for the safeguarded land post-2030. I just, I'm not explaining very well, I know that, but I've got scribblings everywhere and.
I think just to be, to be clear, I mean, the safeguarded land is so that we, the approach is that we shouldn't be, you know, we should be seldomly taking sort of, if you like, green, land out of the green belt, and therefore, we identify the safeguarded land to stop the constant changes to the green belt boundary, because that's the advice that we, that we have to work with. So the safeguarded land is there as a, if you like, as a buffer for the future, but we don't know what that land might be used for. It's safeguarded, yes, it's taken out the green belt, but it's safeguarded. And I guess if there is a significant change to the approach, or policies change, or there's a change in the, I know how housing figures are created, or there's a sudden reduction in demand if we were looking at housing, then those sites would not be utilised. I'm certainly familiar with safeguarded land that, I suppose I was brought up in the Mapplesfield area, that sat there for many years and wasn't used. Yes, some of it has now because of the needs through housing, but I think the other point about, just generally, is that there's been a lot of focus on safeguarded land and housing, but the SADPD, as I was starting to lead to, deals with a lot more than just housing allocations and loads of policies in there as well. So, so, like I said, the reason why, I'm not trying to duck or avoid questions, it's just that there's, the evidence behind this would require me to start, you know, looking into all of the details of how we've got into that approach, and therefore, I'm just trying to give you the broad, high-level answers, if you like, without getting into some of that detail, because I just don't have that before me. But as I say, if you look at your appendix, you'll see, or appendices, you'll see all of the documents have all of those evidence-based. And I think the other point is, is, you know, there is still the opportunity, we're only asking Cabinet to recommend and go out to consultation, and then we'll get on to put further sort of public representation. So there is still the opportunity for these comments to go forward and be reviewed at examination stage.
Okay, thanks very much, David. Thank you very much, David. I'm now going to ask councillor Redstone, but can I please ask all councillors, if your question has been previously asked, albeit in a different format, unless you feel that you haven't got the answer from the officer that you would be looking for, can you please desist from asking that question again? Thank you very much. So councillor Redstone?
Thank you, Chair. I've got four questions to ask you, David. The first is, why do you think that this plan will succeed when you tried the same approach in 2017 and it was thrown out by inspectors?
I think if you ask all your questions, and then David will come back, please, Patrick.
Okay. The second question is, what's your explanation for the shortfall in the numbers of houses built over the first 10 years of the plan? What lessons have been learnt? And why do you think that this shortfall will be brought up, will be made good in the second half of the plan? The, I think if I can stop there now, and then I'll ask the other two questions, because the, I do require replies before I can move on to the last.
I see, so what you're suggesting is that your subsequent questions might already be answered, or if not, they will.
Exactly.
I understand, that's fine. Mr Malcolm, if you can answer those two questions, please?
Yes, I mean, I'm not, maybe a point clarification, I'm not sure which plan got, got thrown out in 2017, the local plan strategy was adopted in 2017. We've not, the SADPD has not been to examination.
Sorry, maybe I got my date wrong. I'm talking about the plan which was, which was thrown out by inspectors and led to two years of mayhem as developers did pretty much what they liked in Cheshire East.
Oh, so that was when we suspected the local plan strategy?
Yes, that's right.
Right, but it's not part of the SADPD though?
No, no, it's not, but you're, the fundamental, as I understood it, was that the problem was the plan was unbalanced, and this favoured the north in that they had very little development, and the south, which had the majority of the development, the inspector didn't like that, and you are now replicating that with this SAP?
No, we're not on this, I suppose this is, again, I don't want to go back five, seven years, I mean, the local plan strategy was effectively reviewed because our aspirations around growth did not provide for sufficient housing numbers, and that was one of the many sort of, we were proposing quite a high growth agenda for Cheshire East, but it didn't have the reciprocal housing requirements to go with it, amongst, amongst other things. But I don't want to, I don't want to go back, but I think in terms of, we're not proposing anything that's, that's out of sync with the local plan strategy. And as I said, we're not proposing to suddenly say we're no longer building 36,000 houses, or that's, you know, again, we talked about the numbers before. All we're saying in this is that we expect and believe that the additional housing that was proposed through the allocations, through those green belt allocations, can now be provided through a different approach, which is focusing on the windfall sites, sites that would come through as part of general redevelopment of particular sites and buildings, which is part of the normal planning process. Because the numbers are so limited, and we've already got significant commitments already in place for the local service centres, that's why we don't believe that, for those additional 290, I think it's referred to in the report, we don't believe those circumstances are there, therefore, that's why we're, we're removing those allocations and therefore not going into the green belt as was originally, as was proposed, like last August, I think is possibly where you're, so they, we first went out saying it last August, and that's what we proposed, following consultations and looking at the latest updates, that's why we're proposing to, to not take those sites out of the green belt. But in all other respects, it is, you know, in accordance with the local plan, the local plan strategy. The reason, and again, it's not part of the SADPD approach, but the reason why housing wasn't delivered prior to the high figures that we're delivering now, was also due to the, entirely down to the economic downturn, and that housing just wasn't being delivered, not only Cheshire East, just across the country, but as a consequence, we've had to pick up that shortfall. So the 1,800 per year, we have a backlog of housing because 1,800 wasn't being delivered in the early, where we are now, probably in the early 2010s, if you like, 2015-ish, probably onwards, it started to pick up, but ultimately, that's why we had a shortfall. So we have to deal with that shortfall through the housing land supply and the monitoring. And that's why when you look at the figures that we've had over the last two or three years, whether we've had near enough 9,000 or so houses over the last three years, we're still actually behind the curve because of the backlog that we had previously. But again, that's not directly relevant to the SADPD elements of it, but the housing numbers we're looking at are still, you know, still aligned with the local plan strategy.
Okay, councillor Redstone, do you want to ask your secondary questions?
Yes, your figures for the number of houses, or the number of permissions that you, and sites which you've got allocated relies on, for example, Hanforth Garden Village, that I think we established that you've got 750 houses in your plan for that to be delivered from that particular development?
The local plan, the local plan strategy allocates the site in Hanforth, I think it's up to 1,600 houses.
Yes, but you, how many of those are going to be delivered within this next 10 years?
I think that the original proposal was that that would be delivered within the plan period.
Okay. If that's so, has, is there an approved master plan for the site?
The Hanforth Garden Village, again, not part of the SADPD, but that Garden Village has an outline planning application which is with us at the moment, it's also been subject to a supplementary planning document. So that application, you know, will be coming to, through to members in the next few months.
Right, and how many houses is it for?
The allocations, I think up to 1,600, I think the application may be 1,500. So yeah, it's broadly in accordance.